Well, welcome back, everybody. I hope you all had a lovely summer. First item, apologies for absence. Do I have any apologies? councillor Taylor.
Councillor Simon Howarth.
Councillor John.
Councillor Christopher Edwards.
Any others? No, okay. So now we're going to move to the minutes of the last meeting, held on 21st of July. Are we willing to accept these as true and accurate record of the meeting? Is anybody willing to propose those as accurate? Lovely, thank you councillor Strong. Right, declarations of interest. councillor Grokewell.
I note that councillor Birch is now able to get through. I was going to say councillor Birch. I'm on standby in case she couldn't get through, but she can now, so she can do it herself.
Just with regards to the item 7.1, I should declare an interest, as the council has a very modest investment in the Gateway Credit Union, of which until recently I was the manager, and I'm still supporting the board.
Lovely, thank you councillor Birch. Do I have any others? No, okay. Right, now, we're going to move to a very sad announcement, of which you will all be aware, which is the death of her late Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. I would ask everybody to be upstanding, please, for a minute's silence, in which we will also consider the passing of councillor Greenland. Okay, I would like to invite the leaders of each group to pay their tributes to her late Majesty, starting, please, with councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you councillor, right, chair. It's indeed been a most strange and momentous time over the last two, three weeks, which has affected us all in different ways, and very deeply, I believe. It's been said more than once that the passing of the Queen, we're not going to see a person like her again in our lifetimes, or likely to have that length of duty and service given on behalf of the monarchy to her country, which has, for many of us, been a beacon of decency and a role model for how constitutional monarchy should engage, monarchs should engage with the polity and with the citizens of this country. And for me, that's been a moment of reflection over a very long period of time. She ascended the throne before I was born in 1952, but I can remember stories from people at the time who had come through a terrible period of war, and for how the ascension of Queen Elizabeth was seen as a beacon of optimism and hope. And for many people, over that period of her reign, she has remained this point of stillness, I think is how it's often been described. She's also, as was pointed out to me by a colleague, she did actually reinvent the monarchy, in that she showed just how you behave as a constitutional monarch, and how you maintain those boundaries and relationships. And one of the most interesting things, which I didn't know, you may have known, that prior to the Queen, the monarchy would select the leader of the Conservative Party. But she saw very quickly that that was not the role of the Queen, and allowed the Conservative Party to develop their own system for electing a leader. I don't think I'm alone in my group, and certainly across the chamber, that there may be times when we'd prefer the Queen to have taken that decision, knowing how very objective and always above politics she has been. But nevertheless, I think that shows just how deeply she understood her constitutional role, and just how well aware she was of what she should show in public, how she should behave in public, and how she should engage across all political groups. And in that sense, she was a unifying factor for the whole of the United Kingdom. One thing I find deep compassionate, compassion for, is how very difficult it must have been for her family to lose such a well-loved grandmother, great-grandmother, mother, and having to do much of their grieving in public, and in such an all-consuming public way. I hope they have time now to really grieve together for a loss of someone who must have been the centre for their family for so very long.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. councillor John.
Thank you. And can I start by associating myself with the words of the leader, and offer the condolences of the Conservative Group to His Majesty the King, the Royal Highnesses, the Prince of Princess of Wales, and the whole royal family. They have lost a much-loved mother, grandmother, great-grandmother. We were all shocked and deeply saddened by the news of the death of Her Majesty the Queen, while we knew that she was advancing in years and clearly devastated by the loss of Prince Philip. She had reigned for so long, it was almost as if we'd forgotten she was mortal, that she was, she'd been this constant with us for seven decades, and she'd become synonymous with this country, and represented the values that we appreciate the most: dignity, respect, tolerance, hard work, and selflessness. You would have to have been born in the 1940s or earlier to have known any other monarch in your lifetime. In a rapidly changing world, she's been our one constant, and a source of impartial advice and wisdom for our leaders, and a source of reassurance and leadership for us. On so many occasions, she spoke for the nation, and indeed, the wider world. In the hours after 9/11, when we were all coming to terms with an absolutely horrific terrorist atrocity, she spoke for the world, when she said that grief is the price we pay for love. At the start of the first national lockdown in March 2020, again, a time of fear and worry for so many people, she addressed the country, and she gave us all hope. She said, "We will be with our families again, we will be with our friends again, we will meet again." Looking back now, it's really easy to forget how desperately worrying that situation was, but with that one intervention, like all her national addresses, it was really powerful, reassuring, and sharp in its clarity. We were fortunate to have Her Majesty as head of state for so long. In her lifetime, she'd met Mother Teresa, JFK, Nelson Mandela, Charles de Gaulle, Marilyn Monroe, Winston Churchill, and had known three monarchs, including her father, King George VI, and grandfather, King George V. In recent days, former prime ministers have spoken about what a remarkable diplomat she was, and her timely and measured interventions and visits were always great strides forward in international relations, like her visit to the Republic of Ireland in 2011, to West Germany in 1965, and the Soviet Union in 1989. We were really fortunate to be able to celebrate her achievements earlier this year with a unique event of a Platinum Jubilee. Her visits to Wales were always well-attended by well-wishers and members of the public, such was her popularity. And even at the age of 95, she was working for our country, and less than 48 hours before she died, was fulfilling her constitutional duties, inviting her 15th Prime Minister to former government. She showed the world the many advantages of a constitutional monarchy, someone who's above party politics, but who can be a true leader, an articulate public speaker, and a skillful diplomat. We owe her late Majesty a debt beyond reckoning, and are really grateful to have lived through this second Elizabethan age. And it's a tribute that even in death, she was bringing people together. Over the last few weeks, people from all over the world have shared memories of Her Majesty, and reflected on the sacrifices that she made for our country. And I also reflect on the fantastic role model that she has been for her son, King Charles III, and her grandson, the new Prince of Wales. I'm confident that history will judge Queen Elizabeth II as one of the best monarchs our country has ever had, one of the best monarchs of the last thousand years, and surely one of the greatest Britons to have ever lived. God save the King.
Thank you councillor John. councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. The death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II was a very sad day for our country, our community, and many other parts of the world. Many of us have been struck with a profound sadness and a grief perhaps far greater than we might ever have anticipated. Most of us have never known a life without our Queen, indeed, the Queen, as Macron referred to her. The Queen has been a constant, a beacon of certainty in an ever-changing and sometimes worrying world, and people everywhere paused to think about the Queen, what she meant to them personally, to the United Kingdom, and indeed, to the world. We mourn the passing of a remarkable life. The Queen was an iconic figure whose dignity, compassion, and humility represented the best of qualities, which we look for in our leaders, and certainly, in our head of state. Queen Elizabeth lived her life in devoted public service to the nation and to the Crown. I think we can best honour the late Queen's memory by striving to emulate the values of public service which she embodied. I, like so many, was fortunate enough to meet her late Majesty the Queen, and I was struck by her sheer luminescent presence and the grace with which she greeted people so warmly and made them to feel so important. I think that feeling has been shown in the way that millions of people have turned out to pay their own personal respects to her late Majesty. On behalf of the Independent Group, we send our sincere and heartfelt condolences to the royal family at this extremely sad time, and we would wish to pass on our good wishes to King Charles III at the outset of his reign. God save the King.
Thank you councillor Taylor. I would now like to invite councillor John to lead some tributes to our late colleague councillor Bob Greenland, after which there will, of course, be an opportunity for anybody who wishes to, to pay their own respects and share their memories. councillor John.
Thank you. First of all, Scylla Greenland and the family have asked me to read out a statement on their behalf. Scylla and the family would like to express their thanks for all the wonderful cards, letters, flowers, and messages received since Bob died. We also greatly appreciated the attendance at the funeral of so many council colleagues, both elected members and officers. Having initially been reluctant to stand for election, once Bob became a county councillor, he soon realised the impact the role can have, and fully embraced all the opportunities to make a difference for the residents of Monmouthshire. He greatly valued working with members from across the political divide, and with so many talented and dedicated officers. His 18 years as a member of Monmouthshire County Council and the various outside bodies were incredibly fulfilling, if sometimes frustrating or challenging. As a family, we all have different memories of various conversations about council issues, but as our eldest granddaughter said one day, "Please, no council talk at the table, Papa." Thank you again for the friendship Bob enjoyed through council, and for all the support we've received since his passing. On behalf of the Conservative Group, I want to again offer our deepest condolences to Scylla, their children, James, Felicity, Pippa, and their grandchildren. Bob was a very special man. He was someone of the utmost integrity, decency, and courage. He was kind and selfless, always thinking of others. He'd had a distinguished career in public service, and mastered every challenge that came his way in a skillful, determined, yet always charming way. Bob was first elected to Monmouthshire County Council as the councillor for Deverdon in June 2004. He was soon promoted to the council's cabinet, and in 2008, when Peter Fox became council leader, Bob became his deputy. Bob faithfully served the county as deputy leader for a further 14 years. That's over half the time this council has existed, during which time his contribution to the life of our residents has been immeasurable. For much of his time in the council's cabinet, he had responsibility for economic development, planning, tourism, and leisure. He took his responsibilities extremely seriously, and was committed to making Monmouthshire a better place to live. He was a superb orator. He could amend a motion within an inch of its life. And for new members, I wish you'd had the opportunity to see Bob in his prime, standing here, sometimes giving both barrels to councillor Petrucci or councillor Watson, telling them the error of their ways, always in a respectful but disarming way. He achieved much in his roles. He began the modernisation of our leisure centres. But he wasn't driven by ideology, but by delivering innovative solutions that would work for our residents. He thought outside the box, so as some other councils in South Wales were either closing or flogging leisure centres, putting them into a trust. In Monmouthshire, Bob led us on a different path. Perhaps unusually, some might think, for a Conservative, he kept them in public ownership, and began a process of transformation in-house. And Monmouth Leisure Centre is a testament to Bob's vision of a modern, inclusive leisure facility. Bob championed new schools in Monmouth, Caldercot, and Abigavenny, and played a key role on our 21st Century Schools project board. He was instrumental in establishing the council's investment portfolio, which introduced new revenue streams. It was Bob who had the vision for the new cattle market near Raglan, and the phenomenally successful redevelopment of Abigavenny Town Centre, including by securing the new Morrison store. Opposition at the time was considerable, but with that determination and complete belief in the vision, Bob saw it through. With responsibility for the economy and town centres, Bob was always on the side of small businesses, and was passionate about helping our town centres thrive. Many residents will never know the enormous contribution Bob made to public life, both here in Monmouthshire, but also more widely through his roles in the Welsh Local Government Association, where he was for many years a deputy presiding officer. He was popular and well-respected across the political divides, and it was this charm that helped ensure that Monmouthshire punched above its weight. Thanks to Bob, more often than not, Monmouthshire was able to exert disproportionate influence around leadership tables. Bob was a founding director of the school improvement partner organisation, the Education Achievement Service, and was an active supporter of the development of the Cardiff Capital Region City Deal. He served as the first chairman of the Compound Semiconductor Foundry Board in Newport. Bob had a close but professional relationship with officers, recognising that members and officers need to work together to get things done. His partnership with Peter Fox is one of the great success stories of this council. The way the two of them worked in partnership was certainly inspiring to many of us as new councillors joining their team. As council leader, I was grateful to be able to benefit from Bob's wise counsel. Bob was never just a colleague, but was a close friend to all of us in our group. He was always supportive of younger councillors, and was particularly a father figure to me and Sarah Jones when we both joined the cabinet in 2017. Bob was always great fun to be around. Everyone who's ever worked with Bob over the past two decades in Monmouthshire will feel his loss deeply, because he was such a character. And in our group, we formed really, really strong friendship bonds. We'd often socialise together, and Bob was always the life and soul of any party. But often, there would come a point when his glass ran dry, and the wine ran out, and he'd say, "Oh, well, this is a dry old party," which basically meant, "Right, come on, order another bottle of red wine." He was really, and he could, he would tell us the most fantastic stories. He was a brilliant raconteur, and often with fantastic accents, and we just always really enjoyed his company. He was really proud of his children and grandchildren and their achievements, and we were so thrilled that last year, he was well enough to travel to Antigua to see his two daughters complete their incredibly arduous row across the Atlantic Ocean. Bob was a man of great faith. In his later years, it brought him extraordinary happiness to be ordained as a priest. It was his faith that helped Bob confront his recent illness, which was so inspiring. It brought home to me the strength of faith, and how you can overcome adversity through belief, determination, and a positive mindset. Bob was selfless, and was always more concerned about the impact of his health on his family than about himself. Even when his health was failing, he was still a source of wise counsel. In the run-up to and during the election campaign, we would often speak on the phone, and even though he was undergoing chemotherapy or radiotherapy, his main concern was for my welfare and how I was coping. He wasn't concerned for himself. So we will miss him desperately, a dedicated and innovative public servant, a leader in his community, a man of real faith, a much-loved father and grandfather, a kind and humble friend. I learnt a lot from Bob, and I will always look up to him, I will always remember him. So Bob, thank you for what you've done, not just for our county and for our residents, but most of all, for your friendship. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John, for that lovely and clearly very heartfelt tribute. councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the whole Labour group, I'd like to offer our condolences to Scylla and the whole of Bob Greenland's family. I think I didn't have the privilege to know Bob Greenland, but I did have the privilege to attend his funeral. And I was struck by how much loved he was, how much joy he'd given to his children and grandchildren, and to his wife, how much fun he must have been, and how much he was embedded in so many circles of community in Monmouthshire and around, and how many lives that he had touched. And I came away with a sense of a man who had many interests, and was very rounded, and was both a public figure and a very loved and loving private figure. And surely, if our ambition, well, I'd hope our ambition in life is that we can try and make a difference, and to feel that we have contributed both to those close to us and those far away, to make life easier and happier for them, then it appeared to me that Bob Greenland had managed to do that.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. councillor Bromfield.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just reading the statement out on behalf of councillor Demick, who unfortunately can't be here today. "Our dearly beloved colleague and friend Bob fought fiercely against his illness with the same courage and clarity that he brought to life and to the people and work he loved. I will miss his fierce dedication to doing what is right for the residents of Monmouthshire. He meant so much to our group, colleagues, residents of the Monmouthshire and Deverdon community, and to me personally. His physical presence is gone, but the lessons he's taught us will serve Monmouthshire well for many years to come." Thanks.
Thank you councillor Bromfield. councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. As councillor John has said, Bob was simply a master of chambercraft, and frankly, if you want to learn about motions, any needed to learn from Bob, because he was the best teacher anybody could possibly have. I didn't always agree with Bob. In fact, we had some great, great, great disagreements and debates, notably on my opposition to the M4 relief road, or my opposition to the complete removal of the tolls on the M4. But what I loved about Bob was that our debates were struck by passion, they weren't just for their own sake in terms of just having something to say, because Bob was really passionate about the county, about the council, and about what he did. And I was very fortunate enough, you know, having been asked by Paul to do, to take part in the induction programme for all new staff, so Bob and I used to go along and talk to every new member of staff about what the role of a local member was. And it was, it was always, we never know what we were going to say, really, it was always really interesting, and it was always great to hear what Bob was going to say. So I was fortunate to spend time with him doing that. And I have to say, I don't take compliments easily, but I think one of the things that always stayed with me was when Bob said to me, "You really are an excellent local member." That I take as a compliment from Bob. And on behalf of the Independent Group, I would also pass our most sincere condolences to Scylla and the rest of Bob's family.
Thank you councillor Taylor. councillor Pavya.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I, like my other colleagues, I count myself really lucky to have known and worked with Bob. He was one of the kindest, generous, most compassionate individuals I think you could care to meet. He always had time for you, he always had time to listen, or to give considered advice when you were looking for advice. He was generous with his time, he was generous with his knowledge, and certainly, nothing was too much trouble. And I certainly benefited from his experience immensely when I was a new member back in 2017. I knew of the significant contribution that Bob made to this authority over the many years that he was elected to serve here. However, I don't think it was until his funeral, when the broad record of public service, both regionally and nationally, were accounted for, that it truly dawned on me the huge legacy of work that Bob left, and the lives of people he touched, not just residents in Monmouthshire, but public servants as well. I think, you know, councillor Taylor and councillor John have sort of attested to that in their contributions. I think the former leader, Peter Fox, and as councillor John mentioned, his contribution there, their partnership over many years, leading this authority, have been as significant. And for Peter Fox to describe him as a giant of local government, I think says a huge amount to Bob's work, and to Bob as a person. And that extended not just to the local government in Wales, but to across the UK, because he certainly forged a huge network with other councils across the UK. He was a formidable orator and debater, as councillor John said, and who was, I think, a demonstrable example of those seven Nolan principles of public life: selflessness, integrity, honesty, open and accountable, objective, and of course, he demonstrated immense leadership wherever he went. I only really got to know the professional side of Bob, but my other colleagues on the council who've known him a lot longer than I certainly knew the man behind the suit. He's a funny, gregarious, family man, and I think that came out very acutely at his funeral. You know, I certainly got a snapshot from those closest to him, his family and friends, of the wonderful reflections of his life that were conveyed during those contributions that were made there. And I have to say, his funeral was probably one of the best that I've ever attended. I know that sounds odd and unusual to say, but it was emotive, yet it was incredibly uplifting service. And I think listening to all those contributions... And I think listening to all those contributions and really hitting home what a wonderful life well-lived to the service of others that Bob gave. So just to say really, Bob, it's an absolute honour and privilege to have known you and thank you for everything that you've done for this council and for the people of Monmashia.
Thank you, councillor Pavia. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor John has said most of what we all think and he spoke on our behalf very well. But as someone who's worked with him for the last 10 years, I felt that I should just point out that, you know, there were two sides to Bob. One was a serious and intimidating, quite intimidating political figure and one that I didn't always agree with, even though we were on the same side, so to speak. But we always agreed to disagree and he was always very friendly in the end. So he was wonderful to work for. You weren't afraid to express your views. In fact, he encouraged it and I think that's quite a skill. But the other side, the other side hasn't really been spoken about very much and that was the social side of Bob. And he enjoyed nothing more than a sing song. He had a very loud, very, a lovely voice, but a very loud one. And whenever you had arranged social events, which seemed to fall to me quite often, I had to think about the place we were going to and whether it was suitable for Bob's voice because we knew that by the end of the evening, he would be singing very loudly. And it was always in tune, I may add. I went on a leadership course near Cardiff and his name was renowned throughout Wales for getting up to mischief when he was on his leadership course, with Peter, of course. And the tale was told to every new intake. And it was that he just, you know, they had a social evening and it's quite fun. They're great courses if anybody wants to go on it. It's hard work, but you know, there is a social side. However, it usually ends there. But no, not with Bob. He escaped and he went into the centre of Cardiff and he essentially went missing. But somehow, this being Bob, he turned up by the time the lesson started, the lecture started next day and participated in the day's events. How he got through it, nobody knows, but his name is revered amongst all in that building. So there were two sides to him. One was great fun, but one who was really serious and very, very knowledgeable. And he was, it was an honour to work with him and I'm so glad that I knew him. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chair. Bob was one of the best friends I've ever had. I've known him for a good while before I became a councillor and you could always be sure that if you wanted advice, Bob would always give it. I spent several conferences over the years with Bob and Peter and it was always a wonderful time, such friendship. But you always looked up to Bob and I can remember one time when we were up in Blackpool, we wanted to go to a service and there wasn't one handy. And we went to quite a way across Blackpool to this big church for this service. And his sincerity there was amazing. And I think he'll be missed by many people. You could always go to Bob, he'd always help you out and he always used to look through my in touches before I sent them out to make sure I'd done them properly. But I think he'll be missed by many people on all sides of this room here because he was one in a time. There'll only be one Bob. There'll never be anybody quite like him. And our thoughts go to Silla and the family, very much so. And I hope nobody ever forgets him. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powell. Councillor Webb.
Thank you. Some very, very moving tributes, but can I just say a few words, please? So to you, I say one simple thing. So to you, I say one simple thing. Live life to the full and let the joy bells ring. One life's enough and passes fast and faster. But remember this, death is no disaster. When I say adieu, be happy and forgiving. Life was made for you and life was made for living. Thank you, Chair.
And now our chief executive, Paul Matthews, would like to say a few words.
Yes, councillor, I think it's entirely appropriate that you also hear from the officer side of our organisation. For those of you that didn't know Bob, you will be picking up from these tributes what an incredible person he was. For those of you that did know Bob, we're not currently doing him justice because it's very, very difficult to do so. First and foremost, my experience of Bob was as an incredible human being. I think the previous leaders of the Labour group, Mary Anne, be it Dimitri, be it Jim Higginson, they would speak as fondly of Bob as we're hearing from, from within his own party. I think that at a political level is testimony to the man. But first and foremost, as I say, he was a tremendous human being. I've had the privilege of having him in my life for 13 and a half years. He was one of the very first people I saw when I came to Monmashia for interview and he was one of the very few people in my life that had ever genuinely intimidated me. For a short moment in time, just through the sheer quality of his questioning, it was almost a cross-examination within five minutes. But there was a humour and a twinkle in his eye that I could see. I think every officer in this council that's come into contact with Bob has, I won't say necessarily always enjoyed the experience because they weren't always easy conversations. Bob's absolute expectation and a continual ask of me was, are we doing the best for Monmashia? Are we coasting? Are we doing it easy? Can we do it better? Bob was instrumental, in my view, of repositioning the political discourse within this council. He helped me unstitch this place and stitch it back together in a much more appropriate form. Of his time, I've known, I've known almost every leading council politician across Wales for the last 20 years. He is without a shadow of a doubt, one of the best, without a shadow of a doubt. The relationship that you talked to with Peter Fox of its time, in my experience, has been without equal. I think it was councillor Pavia that used the word selfless. And for me, that defined Bob. He had no interest in being the leader of this council. That's not what he was for. He understood the contribution that he could uniquely make. He understood the importance of using his legitimacy and his relationships to bond together his group. So his political work, which I think as councillor Taylor said, within this chamber, if you've got the chance to observe it or be part of it, I think it will stay with us forever. Yes, the master of the abandonment, absolutely the case. But he also had the ability to leave that work at the door. This side, his stage, that side, the human being reappeared straight away. And as I say, for my colleague base, I think we were very lucky to work with a man that seldom, seldom needed a briefing because he was all over it. He lived this place. He lived life. The best memory for me, my defining memory is this. I think this talks to Bob more than anything else and the stories that we could all tell, those of us that were fortunate enough to experience the beyond council activities, they are incredible. But my memory is this. My memory is of the things that Bob didn't have to do, that nobody ever saw. One of the features of this council, certainly for some of us, is that we have to go to any number of arrangements, engagements within and beyond Wales. I can remember on the first two or three occasions that I had to do it and my wife had to come along. She didn't want to come along, but she had to come along. Bob's interest for those entire occasions was in my wife. He wasn't interested in the show. He wasn't interested in the relationships. He had an eye on the individual that possibly felt the least comfortable and that's where he spent his time. I think the mark of a great human being is the care, the sincerity and the action that you see when no action is expected or necessary. On behalf of the officers of this council, to Silla and to her strong family, we continue to wish them the best and Bob will remain a part of the DNA of this organisation for as long as we choose to remember him.
Thank you, Paul. Councilors, we are now going to move to section six, reports to council. Councillor Griffiths, could I invite you, please, to introduce progressing Monmashia's replacement local development plan?
So we're on the side of the table. I thought you had. Council, it's quite difficult to get back to business. We've had the tributes to remarkable people, but business is before us and there is a paper which is asked, you're asked for your endorsement. The paper is a progress report on the development of the... Sorry? The paper before you was asking for your endorsement of the progress being made on the local development plan. This plan has been in preparation since 2019. I want to put on record my thanks to the officer team who've now been working three years on the development of this plan and there are years more to go. In addition, with reference to the tributes you just heard, I acknowledge, because I've been told so often, that the progress that has been made was led by councillor Bob Greenland. I acknowledge that work and express my thanks for it. The development plan is an important document. Once we've completed this task, it will set out the parameters for the development of our county through to 2033, the development of the homes that we need and in due course, the development of the businesses that we need. In 2021, the council agreed a draft strategy for the allocation of land for new homes. That strategy recognised that the existing LDP, this has been around for a decade or more, still had provision for the further development of around 4,700 homes. That, if you like, is the land bank that we have from the existing LDP. The strategy of 2021 proposed that further land should be available for an additional 3,660 homes. Taking those two figures together, the 21 strategy proposed an increase in the number of homes in the county in excess of 8,000. That preferred strategy was submitted to the Welsh Government, which responded to the dismay of many in this council, but responded for its own reasons, that that level of growth would not have its support, would not have the support of the Welsh Government. The Welsh Government took the view that it was contrary to its published national development framework and that it would lead, in its own words, to a displacement of population from neighbouring local authorities. It believed that, if you like, a free-for-all between local authorities, each seeking growth would result in some unnecessarily withering at the expense of others. So it was quite clear in its response that it would not give its support to the level of growth in the 21 strategy. So last May, when I became the responsible cabinet member, options were put to me as the cabinet member, which are reflected in the report before you now. It would be possible, it's still possible, for this council to plough on with its original target for growth. We could put the work into that, our officer time into that, and we could come to the end of the process still proposing 8,000 extra homes. That proposal would go to the independent planning inspectorate, which would consider the argument of Monmashia County Council and it would consider it alongside its interpretation of the national development framework and alongside the arguments that would be put by the Welsh Government. In my estimation, we would be unlikely as a council to succeed in getting the planning except inspectorate to accept that level of growth with those arguments put against it. If we pursued that path, if we do pursue that path and it's up to this council, my suggestion, my argument to you, is that you risk wasting an awful lot of time delaying the development plan and an awful lot of the resources of the county. So I recommend against that option of going ahead with a proposal for that level of growth. The second option that was put to me and the second option in the report was, or is, that we could simply accept the Welsh Government's argument, the argument that there should be no more growth than that which is in the current land bank, that the replacement development plan makes provision for no further land. That was the argument that the Welsh Government put up last year. I considered that argument and I do not support it. I think the case that has been made, it was made by councillor Greenland, it's been made by our officers, that there is a level of further growth needed by this county. It is an aging county. We need a younger demographic profile. We need the energy of younger families coming into this county. So my personal conclusion was that we needed further growth. We wouldn't get as much as first proposed. I looked carefully at the data. We've got a local housing market assessment and the recommendation in this paper is that we should go, we should put to the people of Monmashia in the first instance, a revised target for further growth of between 1,500 and 2,000 extra homes. I think the case can be made for that. Indeed, I took it on myself to engage directly with the chief planning officer in Welsh Government, rehearsed the arguments for that level of growth. Council leader, Mary Anne and myself arranged to meet the Welsh Government Housing Minister and we made the case for that level of growth. We made the case recognising or sharing the argument for a growing county, but stressing the need for an increased supply of affordable housing in the county. And the growth strategy that we're putting forward before you today, the one that we're asking for your endorsement on the direction of travel, is one which has a particular stress on the supply of affordable housing. It is the case that over the last two decades, we've, not we, the United Kingdom has pursued a model of providing affordable housing on the back of market housing, that you plan for, let's just say, 10,000 market homes, persuading the market, persuading the developer that there is sufficient profit in that development to provide on the periphery, perhaps 2,000 affordable homes. It is, if you like, an argument of trickle-down economics. Invest in those who can afford their market homes and you may get affordable homes as a trickle-down. Across the chamber, many of you have seen this argument, this model in practice, and you know that all too often it has failed. you know that all too often it has failed. The developers come back, come back with their viability arguments and say, well, we may have thought you could have so many affordable homes, but the market's changing and we'll revise the figures downwards. It has failed in terms of the data, it's failed in terms of providing the housing opportunities that people need. So the argument that we put to the Welsh Government Minister, that rather than see the supply of affordable homes as a trickle-down from the supply of market homes, we would put that in as the central and core feature of our housing development plans. Following our housing market assessments, we committed in our arguments, and it will be a commitment as this plan progresses with your support, that 50% of the extra homes, that 1,500, 2,000, would be affordable homes. And again, following the data in our assessment, that 68% of those affordable homes would be social housing for rent. The remaining figure would be, if you like, intermediary housing, we would try, we would gain a price or a rent, something between the market rate and social housing for rent. It is a radical plan, and many have put to me, can you deliver? What about the viability arguments if you go for 50%? The argument that we rehearsed with the Welsh Government was that we could only achieve that level of affordable housing with the support of the Welsh Government itself. The intervention rate with social housing grants until recently was a standard rate for all housing developments in all locations across Wales. That wasn't working, because circumstances were different. We have put it to the Welsh Government Housing Minister, if she shares our ambition for affordable housing in a high-cost environment such as Monmouthshire, then she is going to have to vary the social housing grant to make those sites work. Sad to tell you, she's not committed herself to any figure, but she understands the argument, and that if she comes, if you come to support this direction of travel as a council, if she comes to support it as Welsh Government, we will have to take, undertake an intense negotiation on what the appropriate social housing grant will need to be site by site, and we are prepared for that. That will be a cost to Welsh Government. Down the line, there will be costs, foregone benefits to this county, I think in some of the sites, we will have to look to the contribution of council-owned land in order to achieve the affordable housing targets that we need. We also discussed with the Welsh Housing Minister that, as well as having aspirations for the quantity of supply, we had very high aspirations for the quality of housing supply, both market housing and social housing. My ambition, which I hope will become the council's ambition, is that the houses we build under this plan will be pioneering, will be regarded as exemplar, not just in Wales, but throughout the United Kingdom. We will learn from the very best in the technologies of sustainable housing, we will learn from the very best in ensuring that housing sites are thoroughly and imaginatively connected to existing settlements. That's not just ensuring the quality of life of new residents in new settlements, but improving the quality of life in existing settlements, who will benefit from the input of new residents around them. That connectivity will be crucial. So high-quality housing, highly sustainable housing, thoroughly well-connected in imaginative ways to existing settlements. That's the vision that we put to the Welsh Government Housing Minister, and on that basis, she was in no position to agree what we're going to submit, but she gave us a clear indication that the sorts of figures we were talking about, the sort of vision we were talking about, would get favourable consideration. Those are the vision, you've got a sense of the quantities involved in the proposal before you. I just finally want to share with you our thinking about the distribution of the housing. It needs to be throughout the county. There will be sites in each part of the county, in the existing land bank and in the new allocations, which will come forward from all parts of the county. We are unable to be specific in the document you get today, because there is a proper process still being undertaken on the appraisal of candidate sites, and that appraisal is still to be completed, and everyone has to see that it is a fair and not prejudged appraisal. And we won't have the results of that till later this year. My intention is that we will see at least two primary sites, one, at least one in the north of the county, and at least one in the south of the county. It will be distributed growth. But whilst there'll be a focus on those two primary sites, there will also be distribution in all settlements and in all parts of the county. The qualification to that is that we have the constraint of the fact that our rivers, the Asc and the Y, are so extraordinarily and unfortunately contaminated, and that needs crucially to be addressed for the quality of life for all of us. Until that is addressed, then the Natural Resources Wales has put a constraint on development, that no development can take place in a catchment area unless steps are taken to ensure that it has neutrality on the impact on the rivers. That is being worked on, but that work will take time, and will take, in my view, a lot of robust decision-taking by a lot of actors to get our rivers back to where they need to be. Until that takes place, there will be limited development, for instance, in the town of Monmouth.
Sorry councillor Griffiths, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up shortly.
Right, okay. But there will be distributed growth throughout the county. So that's the paper before you. I think it's an exciting prospect before you, and I hope that you can endorse the direction of travel in that paper. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Griffiths. councillor Powell.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you councillor Griffiths. A couple of things I'd like to mention. First of all, you want to worry about quality, sorry, I better speak to the mic. In my ward was a fairly new estate called Clasypanwyth, and if you walk up into that ward, the houses are excellent. You cannot tell which are affordable and which aren't affordable. And that is how we hope to always build houses. So if anybody wants to see an excellent place, that's the place to go and have a look. The other thing I'm concerned about is, back here quite a while ago now, we passed, oh sorry, do I have to declare because I'm on the planning committee or not? No, that's right. We passed planning for 115 houses at Raglan, and there were 30, I think 30%, not quite your 50 obviously, but it was 30% affordable, and the Welsh Government turned it down. It throws out, because there were so much protest that they lost it. Now, if the Welsh Government are so keen on us to build houses, and particularly those for affordable houses, why did they turn that down? But anyway, back to the, no, that's gone, that's passed. I'm pleased to hear that we are going to build more houses, and I hope that the Welsh Government will allow us to build some here, because there are a lot of people, it's not bringing so much people into the area, there are an awful lot of people already in the area who are living within doors or their own families, and waiting desperately, young people waiting to try and buy a house. And I think that we should proceed as best we can to provide these properties. So I do support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Powell. councillor Neil.
Thank you, and I also support, warmly support, the plan and also the ambition in the plan. The questions I think I have are about the deliverability of it, and that is a real concern, I think, to, I'm sure, not only a lot of councillors, but a lot of our residents. Developers, they will typically be looking at 15 to 20% margins, or profit margins, and I think it's only, I'm only aware of in London, actually exceeding a 50% target of all development for affordable homes. The capability therefore of meeting, for a developer to make 15 to 20% out of only 50% of the whole development becomes a very, very challenging scenario. And the question arises, that so much dependence here is on the availability of the council sites, and also the availability of Welsh Government support. And so whilst I absolutely support the ambition of that, my concern is, what if those two prerequisites do not materialise? The plan itself could simply fall through. If I may just, you know, on the back of that, I'm not a pessimistic chap, but I think a lot of, if not most economists, I wouldn't want to speak for most economists, but a great many economists are really describing the next period of time in terms of a stalling of the house buying market. That will result in a stalling of the house building sector, and it will require reprioritisation of the plans that may develop, if that were to come about. Again, that's something I would be looking to see in a development plan as a backup in the event of the strongest elements of the plan not being possible for a range of reasons that I've described. I'd appreciate thoughts on that.
Thank you councillor Neil. councillor Chandler.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, and thank you councillor Griffiths for presenting this, and obviously I've had the opportunity to interrogate you in more depth at scrutiny committee, so I just wanted to reiterate a few issues. First of all, greatly support the ambition of the plan, I think the growth plan, I think, is appropriate, and I greatly support your ambition in terms of the quality of the housing that you want to do, and the sustainability of both the individual houses, but also the sustainability of the communities in which those houses will be built, because I think that is hugely important when we're looking at a development plan. So that, I think, is good, and I think in response to sort of the previous comment, I think, you know, I support the principle of an alternative model of how low-cost housing and affordable housing for rent will be built, and looking at not relying on an uplift from commercial developers. And I think that if the projections are right, that actually the commercial house building market is going to stall, then actually that also provides an opportunity, because there is going to be the building contractors, building companies that are actually more available to us in terms of looking at public provision of public development. So I think that actually is an opportunity. I mentioned previously, as well in the scrutiny, about some of the other aspects in terms of the Welsh Government's objections around renewable energy assessments and Gypsyian traveller assessments, I'm reassured that those are going to take place. And I know that also the other problem was the challenges of finding brownfield sites, and I appreciate some of the difficulties of that here. Just the last thing though, I just wanted to say for the record really, is looking at the spatial aspects of this, and I very much appreciate that we, that while you have potential technical solutions to dealing with the phosphate emissions in the upper Asc catchment area, which enables development to go ahead in the upper Asc catchment area, and that is good. I understand that that's not possible for the Y catchment area at the moment because of the different geology and make-up of the pollution in there. I just want to have the reassurance reiterated that the council will, in the progression of this replacement local development plan period, be pushing as hard as it can for a technical solution to dealing with the phosphate emissions in the Y, so that developments in the Monmouth area of the county can also proceed in due course, and that's not just put into the back shelf and Monmouth is left behind. But with those provisions, with those reassurances, I'm very supportive of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler. councillor Birch.
I too would like to thank councillor Griffiths for bringing this forward. This steers, if you like, a middle way and takes us forward, and gets us closer to the point where we can start delivering those affordable homes that are so badly needed. I recently visited a site in Bulwark, which has been developed by Monmouthshire Housing, and I have to say, I think those houses are not only beautiful and contemporary and extremely livable, but they're also high-quality and zero-carbon, or I think a sap of between 98 and 103. So I think that sets the standard for what we would want to see in the county. I agree with councillor Neil's points, it is possible that, following the events of the last week, we are likely to see, I think, a housing slowdown, and there are likely to be issues of affordability, especially if we rely upon the private sector, the house building industry, to bring forward our future housing in Monmouthshire. There may be, well be, a need and an opportunity for us to intervene and ensure that sites are brought forward and are built to provide the houses that are required, once they have been allocated within the plan. And I look forward to working on that. My apologies for the amount of background noise, you'd appreciate that I'm at conference and the leader's speech has just finished, so there is a lot of excitement here.
Thank you councillor Birch. councillor Butler.
Thank you, chairman. First of all, I do wholeheartedly support the revised local development plan. My own village is a large village of Penplenny, and it's in the secondary settlement site along with, sorry, along with Ragland and Asc towns. And we do in fact have five suitable candidate sites around the village, some more suitable than others. Penplenny is a village that's dominated by three and four-bedroom houses, but I often receive representations from our younger demographic, who want to stay in their village. They cannot afford to, and there are very few starter homes in our housing stock. Similarly, there is little opportunity for older residents who want to downsize into a smaller home they can better manage. I support the initiative for 50% affordable housing, but I do feel it is a very ambitious target, because we will have to work very hard to get the developers to come along with us, so I'm really agreeing with Alistair. I note that the local development plan informs the South East Wales Strategic Development Plan. For Penplenny, which sits alongside access to the A4042 trunk road, albeit with only one point of access, I think that Penplenny should be considered as a possible strategic growth area. I note also that there is a strategy being developed regarding phosphates, and I sincerely hope a feasible solution can soon be found. So I therefore support this development plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Butler. councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I did discuss this in quite considerable detail at the scrutiny committee the other day, and obviously the issues that were raised were with... And obviously the issues that were raised were with regard to issues, for example, on the preferred strategy changing from concentrating on Chepstow, Seven Side and Avogavenny. My concern about that is to ensure that there is affordable housing across the county and not in specific areas. I appreciate that the plan that is coming forward has taken account of the difficulties with phosphates, the difficulties in Monmouth with the sewage situation with regard to the capacity there, but, and the rivers and phosphates. But also in the Chepstow area and in, in the south of the county, we've also got infrastructure issues. Now, they're not actually prohibiting development like the phosphate ruling is, but the infrastructure issues around Chepstow are obviously to do with the traffic and the High Beach Roundabout and so forth. So, you know, the suggestion of, of more development in that particular area at the moment, when we're already suffering from quite considerable traffic congestion, I don't think realistically would work very well. And we also had the Forest of Dean coming along with their proposals of seven thousand four hundred and forty houses in their plan and basically expanding Liddney from about eleven thousand houses to fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred houses a day. They've already built about seventeen hundred houses from Liddney and all that traffic from Liddney is impacting Chepstow. So my concern is obviously about the infrastructure issue. I was very interested and pleased to hear that councillor Griffiths said that the development would be in all areas and, and, you know, spread out in all areas. But actually, that's not what the preferred strategy that's before us in the written document actually says. And I'm just wondering if there is some sort of amendment to it because of what has, what has actually been said. And I just wonder, this plan goes on to 2033 and I would have thought, you know, that's eleven years hence. Aren't we expecting any phosphate or waterboard improvements during that time so that developments throughout the county and more evenly spread around the county will be allowed? I would also like this to mention about the development of brownfield sites a lot more and put priority on those, which it doesn't do. And there's no mention of the Green Belt, which is within the National Future Wales 2040 strategy for, for the area around us. So I think, and I would probably reiterate the concerns with regard to reaching the fifty percent level without, you know, significant capital coming from the Welsh Government. And we don't know whether or not that's the case. So there is a, a question mark there. But obviously, coming from around the area of Chepstow, we are concerned about the traffic. And most local people think that you're just building for Bristol, not for the local population. I think it's also interesting to note that eighty percent of the development in the county is already in the south area. So I think we, we should really think about, you know, development spread out. And if, for example, I think we're talking possibly about existing sites that are in these other areas. But I, I would have thought after, you know, getting towards the end of the decade period, that we, we should actually be including those sites as candidate sites as well, you know, on an optimistic basis, on the idea that, that these issues with phosphates and so forth will be overcome. Because otherwise we're saying, well, it's going to be over a decade and nothing's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that the, that Monmouthshire does need growth and I do support it. I note that one of the council's objections within the LDP is demographic balance. However, I have concerns overseeing development in the Monmouth and the Wye Valley areas, which is due to the phosphate water quality issue, as I believe this will cause demographic imbalance within the county. I note that neighbouring Herefordshire is creating a number of integrated wetlands, specifically for the purpose of removing phosphates before they reach the rivers, which enables the damaging ban on development in some areas to be lifted. The new phosphate credit system, which they have in Herefordshire, commenced last month and it allows developers to buy credits generated by the operation of the wetlands to offset the phosphates that their new developments will create. In this way, it is possible to ensure that the overall effect of new development is called, is what's called nutrient neutral, similar to the way companies can offset their carbon footprints by planting trees or sponsoring carbon negative projects. If this pioneering scheme is taking place in our neighbouring county of Herefordshire, then why are we not putting similar measures in place here in Monmouthshire to tackle Monmouthshire's housing need, homelessness, social inequality in this part of the county? I've spoken to residents, developers and land, and land agents who believe that the phosphate water quality issue needs to be addressed in the Monmouth and the Wye Valley areas. If development in these areas has ceased due to phosphates, then this will only exacerbate the supply and demand of properties, which we all know in turn will increase the hot cost of houses. This will widen the gap regarding affordability within the different micro pockets of the county and also make it more difficult for those in need of affordable housing in Monmouth and the Wye Valley to stay and live there. It is further likely that the demographic balance will shift in these areas, especially regarding young people trying to get on the housing ladder. Consequently, this will lead to an aging demographic in the Monmouth and the Wye Valley areas, which in turn, we all know leads to our own issue, its own issues. Therefore, I urge Monmouthshire along with Welsh Government to rapidly look at similar phosphate mitigation methods such as those in Herefordshire, so that housing development does not cease in these parts of Monmouth and the Wye Valley areas of the county for longer than is necessary and certainly not until 2033. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKenna. Councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. As the former chair of the now retired Economy and Development Select Committee, I've certainly been fortunate to be at the heart of the scrutiny of the development of the replacement LDP up until about sixteen months ago when I, when I joined the Cabinet. I have to say, a huge amount of statistical data and evidence was gathered in the previous council term to present to councillors about what the various growth options would look like and what the implications would be, not just on us as a county, but on our Welsh neighbour, Welsh neighbouring authorities as well. So we had housing market demand data, demographic profile of the county, what that looked like, the oldest median working population in the capital city region. The Monmouthshire economies of future work set out what we wanted to achieve and capitalise on as part of the city region partnership and also what link that we could play between the city region and the Western Gateway. Also, the council in conjunction with Torvine and Brian and Gwent produced a commissioned edge analytics to produce a range of demographic and housing employment growth scenarios to inform the growth options that, that were presented to council and were agreed upon in, in 2021. And all done in accordance with requirements of Welsh Government guidance. Now, the council was, was firmly committed to aspirational growth agenda, underpinned by housing-led growth, which would be accompanied by economic and business opportunities, attracting a new, younger economically active demographic, different residential products, so wider market appeal and affordability, higher rates of jobs for dwelling and, and regional access to jobs and labour markets. Now, at the time, we felt the only way to achieve that was rather than redistributional growth, we needed a quantum shift in scalability. So we were looking at a new settlement rather than urban extensions, sustainable garden towns with design quality at the centre and obviously continued cooperation with local authorities, looking at that wider, wider regional strategic piece. So just for new members, I just want to demonstrate the, the strategy that was agreed on, presented to Welsh Government, wasn't produced on the back of a cigarette packet, it was evidence-based policy in action. Now, that evidence hasn't changed. Housing demand and affordability has become more acute and the demographic trajectory as it is will make this authority financially unsustainable in the longer term. What has changed is the Welsh Government's national policy approach. Now, it wants to focus growth in South East Wales on Cardiff, New Borden and the Valleys to the detriment of, of everywhere else, in my view, particularly this part of South East Wales, which I think is extremely disappointing. Now, the cynic in me would probably say this is a backdoor way of gerrymandering local government reform and forcing local authorities to merge within regions. But that, that, that is a cynical approach and particularly our merger here in Gwent. However, I can understand why the new administration, the cabinet member, has taken a pragmatic view to, to, to the situation he's found himself in and has broken, brokered a, a new agreement with, with government, which he wants to consult on, rather than as he, as he already alluded to, getting to the inspected stage and having it thrown out or having to start again from scratch. Now, there are going to be challenges further down the line of this LDP process for particular localities. And the cabinet members, who is a ward neighbour of mine, knows the infrastructure challenges in Chepstow. And I was certainly interested to, to, to hear what he had to say about the Forest of Dean's local plan yesterday. I thought, again, that was a really pragmatic approach and that he hadn't closed the door on a Chepstow relief road, which I thought was positive. However, I think to give this plan and approach credibility, I would like to see the new administration commit to well-tagged stage three on the Chepstow relief road. That way, there's a clear costed business case. Each stakeholder would know the overall project envelope and their liability as well as identifying a preferred route. That would show, I think, the resonance of Chepstow and the, the South East, a part of our county that is a long-term plan to deal with this infrastructure challenge and to manage growth, rather than thinking improved active travel and public transport options are going to resolve this on their own. This is a challenge of infrastructure capacity in the south. You know, there's no getting away from that. You could have a fleet of electric buses and electric cars passing on the A48 and A466. But if you get a, one accident on, on Hardwick Hill, then the whole area becomes gridlocked. It is an issue of additional road capacity. And to take on any more local growth, as councillor Brown alluded to, we need, we, we need that additional infrastructure capacity. And that's not to even look at the, the planned extensions to the Forest of Dean and South Crossdenshire. So to, to conclude, I am disappointed with the Welsh Government's response. I think it's partially ambition for this county in South East Wales. I understand the pragmatic approach that the cabinet member has taken. Will it be enough to address the demand, affordability and demographic challenges that this county faces? I, I don't know. I really don't know. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Pavia. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I am quite happy to support the, the ambition here. But I am also concerned about deliverability. Sales of MCC-owned land has always been ring-fenced for the Twenty First Century Schools Programme and the wider capital programme. So if receipts from land sales are to be used to support the housing, I understand why that would be, I would be concerned about the very heavy burden that would be placed on the revenue budget and consequently on the delivery of frontline services because we wouldn't have that money available, because simply it's been, been used for, for, for housing. So I very much hope that Welsh Government do come across with some support, because without that, I just don't see how it works. But great idea, happy with the idea.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Mayby.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that were made earlier and to clarify a few points, particularly in relation to the phosphates issue. In relation to the Usk, the, the leader and myself had a conversation with the chief executive of Welsh Water last week, who was able to confirm that the phosphate reduction work will be completed by the fiscal year 2025 to 26. That does seem a long way off, but at least we know that that programme is underway. However, there is also work underway on the Y. It's not that there's nothing being done. And a lot of that is actually Welsh Water themselves working with Herefordshire Council on wetland development in Herefordshire, which directly affects our situation in Monmouthshire, because obviously a lot of the problems are upstream to us. So it's not that nothing's being done about the Y in Monmouthshire, it's just that it's a slightly slower process and a more complex one, because wetlands need to be extremely well-developed and managed to work for phosphate reduction. And it's a relatively new thing to do. So it is underway. It was hard for them to commit exactly to when it would be finished, but I don't think we're looking at, at, you know, a, a decade away. The other thing I just wanted to raise as well, I think is really important, is the mention about using credits in order to achieve phosphate neutrality. For me, it's a little bit of a red herring, as were the carbon credits, to be honest with you. NRW have issued guidance on how to achieve phosphate neutrality. They're not saying, don't ever develop anything on the Y, they're saying, develop if you can prove phosphate neutrality. And they set out essentially the ways in which to do that. So I think that does the same job as, as the credits option. It's just, and not creating a commercial environment around it. It's simple guidance about saying, this is what you need to do to achieve phosphate neutrality. Of course, we have to go a little further than phosphate neutrality. We do actually have to reduce the phosphates as well. So it's quite a, a tricky world that we're working in, but I think we are seeing collaboration and increasingly, I'm glad to say, between the local authorities as well. So I just wanted to clear up those facts and reassure you that the Y and the Monmouth area are not just being ignored and put into the distant future, it's just a slightly slower and more complex process. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayby. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to seek some reassurance on how any revised preferred strategy will account for the climate and nature emergency, which was so clearly drawn out in the response we had from Welsh Government. I don't see in this, in the papers that have come forward, any particular, aside from the phosphate matter, but I don't see any particular reference to that. What I see is main reference to affordable housing. Now, whilst I absolutely would agree that we need a very different approach to how we provide housing in the county, I really am interested to see really interesting, different and new opportunities and proposals. Otherwise, I don't think that's at all deliverable unless we do. So I'm not content with what I have before me, because I can't see any further references to, you know, how, you know, what the drive will be around how we balance development with protecting and improving our environment. I have seen many examples of where we have failed to do that to date. And I'm looking to understand how we will balance that going forward. I'm obviously particularly, you know, notwithstanding all areas of the count, of the county, I'm particularly interested in how we are going to mitigate very poor developments on unique landscapes such as the Levels as an example. I'm also not happy to support the fact that we'll be going out to consultation on this in December of, to January twenty-two to twenty, yeah, basically December. I think it's a terrible time to consult about anything. And if that's what we continue to do, given that we've had such a hiatus, I would prefer to see us starting to consult in January twenty-three. And with that proviso and with some reassurances around climate and nature, I'm happy to, to support the fact that we look to a revised preferred strategy. However, I'm not content today yet. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Garrett.
Yeah, I welcome the affordable housing. It's going to be, obviously Monmouth's going to miss out on it for a while, but from what councillor Mayby said, hopefully things will move forwards and we'll be able to get the phosphate issue resolved. I think councillor Griffiths mentioned about connectivity. I've got Kingswood Gate in my ward and residents are still waiting for phase three of the active travel route to be finished. And when we do build new houses, especially in rural areas, we need to make sure we've got that kind of facility infrastructure built in at an early state of the development so that residents aren't waiting for those active travel routes to be, to be installed. I mean, they've been there, they're now waiting another two years because the, the land issue with that area. Also, I welcome the intent to use zero carbon and hope that we will see the latest, you know, ground source heat pumps and solar panels. And we can show, as councillor Griffiths said, that Monmouthshire can be innovative and produce social housing that's going to be fit for the Twenty First Century. Also looking at cooling technology as well, because we've had a really hot summer and also. And also heating in the winter. We're going to go through a horrendous winter from all predictions. If we can show the residents that we're going to be building social housing that's going to provide housing fit for them for the future, then that's what we, you know, I'm looking forward to that and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Garrett. Before we return to councillor Griffiths, any more contributions? No? Okay. councillor Griffiths.
I could thank everyone for their contribution and will certainly consider everything that's been said. If you give us the green light, if you like to, to take it forward to the next stage. I'll try and answer some questions. Mark Hand is with us as well. And where he sees me failing, he'll come in and provide the detail. There have been many references to good examples in the county, Raglan, Bulwark. I'm aware of them. I want to see the detail in them and I want to make sure we learn from them. There's been a lot of properly testing, questioning about the viability of the proposal. How will we achieve 50% affordable housing when it hasn't been achieved in the past? Councillor Alistair O'Neill led on that. As I've said, the model of relying on the private sector and it being a sort of marginal effect of market housing, that's not going to deliver. It will require public intervention. It will require intervention from Welsh Government. The more we innovate, the more we can justifiably claim that our intentions have the ambition that everyone else can learn from, then the greater the incentive will be for Welsh Government to work with us and invest with us. And we'll need to work in partnership from stage one. We can't go with a finished product and say, isn't this nice, invest in it. We're going to have to work hand in hand to share that ambition in order to encourage the investment that we actually need. And that's the path that I want to go down. A lot of discussions about Monmouth, quite rightly. If we get it wrong, it'll get excluded, Monmouth Town, from the growth that is needed. We need to get it right. And I'm interested, and councillor Mayby has expressed her interest, in all the comments that have been made. We need to look at what can be done locally, but an awful lot. The technical solutions around water, catching water, catching pollution, are upstream solutions closer to the source of pollution. We need to encourage those, but they're not always in our hands. I have a personal view that we need to question heavily the business model of some of the agri businesses involved and look at our regulatory functions connected with those. We can't mitigate every impact that comes from those forms of production. And they do have an effect. They have an effect on the way we develop an important town like Monmouth. This is not an academic issue. The distribution, as has been mentioned again, and it's important that we get it right. The papers before you do show a distribution. They show potential sites in the north and the south of the county. This is not going to be concentrated. Not all those sites will come forward in the next stage, but they will be distributed. And the fact that we can identify key sites does not mean that we don't have a very keen interest in the so-called brownfield sites, inner town sites in all our existing settlements. There will be change of use as our towns change shape. And there will be opportunities to bring housing very close to the centre of our towns. And we need to commit ourselves to taking those opportunities whenever they come through. There's a question relating to ensuring that we manage the environmental impact of the housing that we put in place. We need to strengthen, it seems to me, the overall statements we make in the documents. But of course, much of that has to be achieved project by project. And we need to commit ourselves to do that. So I've learnt a lot from the discussion. I hope you give us the green light to take this forward. Mark, tell me what I've got wrong.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, councillor Griffiths. I don't think there's anything that you got wrong at all, cabinet member. I think I'd just add, if you don't mind, an emphasis on the phosphate solution work. I completely understand the points that are being made about what might happen to the Monmouth area, the upper Y. The points that councillor McKenna was making about not meeting those objectives, not delivering affordable housing nor employment, and the situation getting worse. So I guess just to reiterate, it's absolutely our priority as officers and working with cabinet members to find those solutions. The only issue we have at the moment is we have a clear way forward and commitment from Welsh Water around the USK and the Clanfoyst. There isn't that certainty of a solution for the Y at the moment. But we'll keep on working on that. Welsh Water's certainly committed to funding the solution in as far as it relates to wastewater treatment works. And there's all kinds of other work that needs to happen around agriculture and the other causes. But just to give that reassurance, you know, we're committed to finding that solution collectively, working with other stakeholders to make sure that the Monmouth and the upper Y isn't forgotten or at a disadvantage. Very briefly, one thing that we are looking to do in the plan to help a small way towards that is we have a number of sites in the current LDP in Monmouth and Wysham, which are stuck because of phosphates. And also a couple of sites with planning consent that are stuck. What we can do as part of the plan going forwards is keep those within the settlement boundary of Monmouth. And they can count as aspiration sites that come forward, you know, a bonus. The Welsh Government's development plans manual allows for that. So those sites could still happen without us having to rely on them as part of our housing delivery, because we haven't got that certainty yet. So we can make sure the door is open, so when a solution comes forward, those things can still happen. And also, once we have a phosphate solution, other sites within Monmouth Town Centre. So we've had conversations around levelling up funds and the market hall. There's other properties in Mono Street you'll be aware of that could come forward then when there's a phosphate solution. So we can leave the door ajar in that sense as well. But otherwise, Chair, cabinet member, I think councillor Griffiths has covered the question. So I have nothing more to add. Thanks.
Lovely. Thank you. So councillors, we will now move to a vote on whether to endorse the development plan as presented by councillor Griffiths. Councillors, that has been approved. And as we have been going for an hour forty minutes, we're going to take a break. So back in ten minutes, please.
Right, welcome back everyone. We're now going to take item 6.2, Motion for the Rivers and Ocean, councillor Mayby.
Thank you Chair. I'll just give a little bit of background, I'm not going to talk through the whole of the report and action plan, you'll be glad to hear, but just to set it in context and describe in summary what we're trying to achieve with it. This council declared the climate emergency in 2019 and our Climate Emergency Action Plan recognised the importance of managing green spaces to reduce energy use, absorb carbon and be resilient, but it didn't at that time include anything about oceans or rivers. But when the plan was updated in 2021, the emphasis on nature recovery was strengthened and an action on addressing water quality was added. It's now very clear, as we've already discussed today, that our rivers as well as our oceans are in a state of crisis. In the rivers, we see water quality deteriorating as a result of pollution from sewage, agricultural practices and pressure from development. The impact on biodiversity of excess phosphates and nitrates has actually been further exacerbated this year with extremely dry weather and high temperatures, which meant that water levels in our rivers are very low. But also the health of our rivers and oceans is impacted by litter, in particular plastics, the horrific extent of which can be seen on riverbanks and beaches, and microplastics have been found in fish and other species, including people. So I'm pleased to present this report, which sets out the problems we face, together with an action plan, because we need to play our part in mitigating further damage and achieving nature recovery. The report specifically responds to the commitment made in the motion for rivers and oceans back in February. The reason it refers to oceans, which might sound a little bit strange for Monmouthshire, was that it had actually adapted a template that came from a national LGA template about oceans, and it was adapted to reflect more the rivers and our estuary location, and that's why the word oceans is in there, which sounds a little peculiar at times. But this report also specifically responds to the commitment that we made in the motion here in June, so it's been a kind of growing awareness and development of understanding of this problem. The action plan covers estuary and coastal management, river catchment management, nature recovery, litter reduction and education and awareness. It recognises that while there are direct actions we can take, much of what we can achieve will be through partnerships and influence. It also recognises that this will take time and that we will need to be both persistent and consistent. And from that point of view, I've been greatly heartened by the unanimity across political groups that we've seen to date on this issue, and the engagement we've had on these topics and developing our ideas for the community corporate plan. So I hope we can continue to work together to show what a progressive council we are on these things that really matter for our residents and for future generations. We did present this report to scrutiny yesterday, so it's all a bit of a rush job to reflect on that, but I'm happy to say there was a general good reception on it, but some very important and relevant points made about the next six month report. We'd like to see progress and particularly understand more what's being done on plastics and on litter, because it's something that we can take direct action on in our area. So that's all I wanted to say, and I'm sure there's going to be questions, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayby. Councillor Chandler.
Thank you Chair, and thank you councillor Mayby. Yes, as you alluded to, obviously I was part of the scrutiny committee yesterday that interrogated this plan, and you're aware of my reservations for it. It's heartening to see the amount of work that the council is already doing in so many different areas, but within this as an action plan, it really is a collation of existing work and doesn't necessarily reflect, in my view, the rationale behind us as a council passing the motion early this year that said, actually what we're doing is not enough and we needed to do more. So what I'm looking for really is that, yes, content to accept this action plan at this stage in its development, but in six months' time wanting to see something that's more robust and something that's more strategic. All of these different elements that are listed in the action plan, all the various partnerships that we're part of, the meetings that we go to, the continued support that we're giving to different organisations, that's great, but I want to see how that's going to be more joined up. How is this joined up into a strategy that is actually leveraging the most that we can do as a council to actually clean up our rivers and our oceans? Obviously, particularly in terms of some of the more chemical pollution aspects of our rivers, we're working in partnership, it's not something that we have a great deal of control over, and you list a number of the partnerships that we're involved with. I would like to be seeing, not just listing the partnerships and saying that it's ongoing work, I'd like to be seeing what is our ambition in those partnerships? We're part of this partnership in order to achieve this, and I want us to be very explicit, if we can in that, so that we have something that we can hold you to account to as we get six monthly updates on this, in terms of what progress have you been able to make on those ambitions, and whether it's because of our lack of activity or because it's blockages from the partners that we're working with, that's fine, but we need to have those updates. I'd certainly want to be look at that. But I think I'd want to be looking at something a little bit more, as alluded to, is what is missing, and I don't have a proposal here and now, just in the 24 hours since the scrutiny committee, but I would like to see that by the time of the next report in six months' time, the updated action plan, a sense of a gap analysis, saying what is it that we're already doing, which this report covers well, but what is it that we're not doing, or what is it that we're not being effective in, and actually bringing into that updated action plan a much stronger sense of strategy, of a gap analysis of where we want to scale up our work and what our ambitions are in each of those different aspects of our work, and particularly where we can intervene directly. There is also an element in that, in terms of there is, particularly when we're looking at the plastic side of things, an over-reliance, I believe, on the voluntary sector in order to be able to solve the problems for us, so I would also want to see more work in terms of actually what we as a council could be doing to actually intervene in that area, rather than relying on the plastic free groups and the Keep Wales Tidy groups that are working extremely hard, and I applaud their efforts, but it's not a substitute for us as a local authority to be able to work harder and to work with business and with other actors in order to reduce that as well. So that will be my final comment, but as I said, I'm content with this for the moment, but we'll be looking for something much stronger when we get an update next year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for the report, and we're really pleased that this has come to council, given it was our former colleague councillor Jane Pratt who brought the motion to council six months ago, and I pay tribute to the work she did as cabinet member to really champion water quality, and her work contributed to this plan being developed. Some really important points in there that we support, particularly around the Living Levels partnership, protecting the reeds, making the levels more sustainable, but also educating people about the unique properties of the Gwent Levels, and it was a privilege to sit on the Gwent Levels board for a few years. We support the work in there about flood defences, particularly in the Coldcot area. We hope the new administration will be continuing the work we began in exploring areas where we own land as a council that could be, could give us opportunities for some natural solutions to phosphate stripping that can be complemented by the investment that Welsh Water is making, particularly in the Lamboyce area, in phosphate stripping. We also welcome the investment that Welsh Water are putting into the Usk area at the moment, that £10 million, and I know councillor Kieran and councillor Howells have been involved in those discussions as well. I'd also like to thank councillor Mayby for the mature approach he's brought to this report, because sometimes this issue has been misrepresented in the media, or sometimes deliberately for political gain, as if some people support pumping sewage into the rivers, which is just ridiculous. It's a complex issue and the solutions are not going to be easy. It's not as if we can just ban storm overflows. The Welsh Government have said that storm overflows provide a control point of relief at times of heavy rainfall, they perform a crucial role in reducing the risk of sewers flooding homes and public spaces, preventing sewerage from flooding homes and businesses. Removing all existing storm overflows would be a long-term, multi-billion pound, carbon-intensive project and would not be the most effective way of improving water quality or be resilient to the increasing pressures from climate change. So that's a statement that Julie James made recently, so we've got to make sure we're engaging in that mature debate about how do we tackle, how do we work together to tackle this problem, because nobody supports pumping sewage into the rivers, just as nobody supports sewage being pumped backwards into people's homes and streets. We think there's more that we and other councils can do to lobby Welsh Government to ensure that Natural Resources Wales is fit for purpose and able to fulfil its statutory obligations, and I also associate myself with the comments that councillor Chandler made a couple of minutes ago, particularly around plastics. We think there's more that can be done to beef up the action plan, but we think there's more the council can do in terms of plastic elimination, so I'm keen to continue working with Welsh Government on their bill that's coming forward in the next few months as well. So there's a couple of key points, but I'm very grateful for the opportunity to contribute, and we're glad that we're continuing to move forward in the spirit of cooperation, because I think there's a lot of agreement across the chamber in this area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair. Welcome, the action plan and the report, I think very helpful, I was very pleased to see the references to the levels and want to probably talk a little further about the matters that councillor John has just mentioned in terms of the levels. I think it would be really helpful to strengthen that area of our action plan, which talks about us working in partnership to support the Living Levels partnership, because the levels is actually a very complex patchwork of roles and responsibilities, and as we saw with the flooding in 2023, it is not at all terribly clear at times whose role and responsibility it is. So I would absolutely support councillor John's comment that it would be really helpful for us to lobby Welsh Government to ensure that NRW is fit for purpose and is able to fulfil its statutory duties in protecting the levels. So for me personally, I would very much welcome strengthening the element around the levels, of phosphates as we do in some of the other main rivers, but we do have significant issues around pollution which are not phosphate necessarily related, but are related to the kind of almost industrialisation of some of the levels. And I think those issues are really important if we are going to address this matter in its entirety. So very much welcome the draft action plan, but would again hope, as with councillor Chandler and councillor John, to see that strengthened over the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councilor Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with councillor John and that the NRW should be, in my view, held far more responsible. And to give you an example, last winter, when we had really bad weather, the sluice gate from the Neddern, near the Sevenbridge Industrial Estate in Caldicott, was jammed shut and it took NRW five days to come out and clear it and make sure the gate was open. Consequently from that, the whole of Castle Lodge Crescent were flooded, so were many, many businesses on the Sevenbridge Industrial Estate. And that led to thousands and thousands of pounds being claimed on insurance. And then from that, because the water was there for such a long time, the residents were then invaded with little people called rats. So they are, they should be held more responsible. That's a very, very important sluice gate, comes through the castle and to the main road and down to the industrial estate and then out. But yes, I support this and I think we should be just keeping an eye on what happens with NRW. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stevens. Councillor Howells.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I welcome this motion as well. I belong to a campaign group, the Save the River Asc, headed by our local wild swimmer, Angela Jones. We have a meeting this Thursday, so anyone is welcome to attend that at the Sessions House at seven o'clock. We're also doing a walk or a march on Saturday to bring awareness in Crickhowl. So again, members are welcome to attend, and I believe some may already be attending as well. Salmon, I'm told, are the canaries of the river, indicating how clean our rivers are by their presence. A local fisherman recently told me that 20 years ago, there are over 1,000 salmon caught in the River Asc every year. That figure has declined to a mere hundredth this year. We all start to recognise that we all have our roles to play in reducing, in causing the pollution, in either reducing our own water usage or looking at alternative agricultural methods. But I think we all agree that what we can't do is ignore this any longer and do everything that we can to make amends. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howells. Councillor Eason.
Thank you, Chair. That was quick. Yes, I just come back about this comment about salmon in the Asc and salmon in the Wye. As far as I'm concerned, NRW have put an embargo on any salmon being caught in those rivers at the present moment, particularly with the Lavnett fishermen who operate the ancient way of catching salmon on the bottom end of the Wye. So I'd like some clarity as to whether salmon have been allowed to be caught in other rivers, but not the Wye and not the Lavnett fishermen, because there's been some contention about this particular issue. And I think also that councillor Stevens referred to the fact that we're getting flooding from the sluice gate up, which is not being cleared. Now, the sluice gate that she's on about is managed by Highways England, not by NRW, because that's to do with the seven crossing. No, I'm just concerned about the amount of salmon that are allowed to be caught. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eason. Any more contributions before we return to councillor Mayby? No? Councillor Mayby.
Thanks. Just a very quick response and just to say thanks to Hazel Clatworthy for pulling together this report. And I know that Hazel's very keen to get started again with the internal working group on climate and nature. And I think certainly from the contributions we've had from across the council, there's clearly a lot of interest that we can pull together into a working group to move forward with this. So we'll do that in the very near future. I think that's probably all to say, because there's so many details for us to talk about. That's the best way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mayby. Councillors, we'll now move to a vote on this item. So we will now move to item 6.3, Monlife tackling poverty and inequality summer programmes 2022 report. Councillor Fuchs.
Thank you, Chair. Is that working? Yeah. So the aim of this paper is to show how we are combating inequality and poverty throughout our work as an administration. And I thank Nick John very much for this paper, which gives some of the impact and results of our summer campaign for Monlife. I direct councillors to paper 3A, which is the excellent infographic, which shows really, really clearly the impact of the work. And I'm just going to run through a couple of highlights. So this work was done with an investment of £140,000 from Welsh Government, for which we're incredibly grateful. But also town and community councils funded the work, as well as the Welsh Museums Federation. So we're really grateful for those three funders. We did a range of activities aimed at different groups. We did outdoor activities, we did free swimming sessions, the Mammashia Games, we had Menta Yith, a programme delivered in Welsh this year, also refugee support, we had 60 spaces for refugees at the Mammashia Games. Museums were involved, there was free access to Caldicott Castle, there was some free art and Bird Box Building as well. So in terms of the headlines, just under 4,000, that's 3,935 children, attended the Mammashia Games, we provided 4,000 free lunches and breakfasts, and 249 children attended the active play sessions. So those are some of the highlights. This work helped reach families across Mammashia during the summer holidays and make provision for them in terms of childcare and in terms of food and in terms of exercise and the summer of fun. So that's the report. And I just wanted to point out that I'm giving this report because councillor Birch is accessing the meeting remotely. But if people do have questions, I might not be able to answer them all, and councillor Birch is ready to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fuchs. Councillor Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillor Fuchs, for the update. During the last administration in 2021, I had the pleasure as the Cabinet member for Monlife to attend one of the schools that hosted the Shep programme and attend the seventh year of the Mammashia Games. And it is wonderful to see all the happy young faces enjoying themselves to the fullest. I just want to read out a feedback email I had from a parent whose child attended Shep, just so everyone can realise the difference it's making. They had an amazing time at Shep over the summer, they refer to it as summer club, and want to go back again and again. A real success for them, so thank you ever so much for getting us a place, and huge thanks to the impressive young staff who ran it for you. I made a point to thank each of them at the end, and especially Jess, who ran the event, and especially Ollie, Nile, Joanna, Hannah and Mia, who between them ensured my child is safe and participated constructively. From crafting a two-metre-tall Godzilla out of paper, clothes pegs and straws, to climbing walls and kicking balls, our child had a fantastic experience and we are tremendously grateful. The school holiday enrichment programme in the Mammashia Games was especially valuable during the pandemic, but I think it's equally important now, allowing the county's children to be active, have fun and socialise. And they have been brilliantly organised by Monlife staff. So I just want to give personal thanks to Ian Saunders, Nick John and the rest of the Monlife team. They do fantastic work and I don't think we give them enough thanks. So thank you all.
Thank you, councillor Dimmock. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask when we will see the measure output and impact report on this activity, please? Sorry, Maureen, I said, can you let us know when we'll see the measure outcome and impact report?
Councillor Fuchs.
I think that might be one for councillor Birch or one of the officers.
Councillor Birch, are you able to answer councillor Taylor?
Now that the summer holidays are over, I'm sure the Monlife team will be working hard on it. I don't know whether Nick is able to give us the dates, but I do expect it to certainly come perhaps by half, can we get it back before half term, do you think, Nick?
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, members. Yes, the programme is currently running till the end of September. So finalising to the end of September, we'll have a comprehensive report, which will cover the summer and a number of the initiatives that's in the containing report today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Grokot.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to bring councillors' notice to one particular element of the summer programme, and that's the food and fun programme. And the primary school in My Ward was one of those that participated in this, and it's huge value in bringing home the importance of good nutrition to children and their families. It represented, I think, a fantastic collaboration between the Welsh Government, who provided funding and support, from ourselves, from local supermarkets, who provided a range of food. And I spent a fantastic day talking to youngsters who were talking to me about how they were taking the ideas for healthy food that they'd picked up during the day back home. They'd eaten bits of fruit that they had never seen in their lives before. And I think when we're talking about diet and nutrition, those of us who sit in this gilded hall this afternoon will no doubt have seen a whole range of fruit and vegetables. But we forget that those of our youngsters who live in some of our poorest communities live in a diet which lacks many of those nice parts, and indeed live on diets that contain far too much processed food that is bought in supermarkets. I think that it is important that we start with our youngsters, get them to appreciate the value and the importance of a balanced diet that contains good nutrition. And I think that that food and fun element of the summer programme, if members get a chance to go and see it next year, it was fantastic. And to see those kids actually appreciating the importance of the food they eat, maybe for the first time in their little lives, but it was fantastic.
Thank you, councillor Grokot. Councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. I was also very fortunate to visit Juysto School in Caldicott for the fun and for a fun and food day. In some ways, it was absolutely fantastic to see, but in other ways, it was also sad. One of the wonderful staff told me about a little five-year-old girl, that every morning that she went to the fun and food, she'd eat four rounds of toast because she was so hungry. That was her first, and then she'd have some cereal because she was there because she was so hungry. Also, I was very impressed with a few of the parents that were present. They were also learning about the food and the fun. They had their small children with them. And I can't praise enough the staff that were there that day. It makes you realise what, how deprived some families are. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stevens. Councillor Birch.
The Monlife services make a huge contribution to quality of life in our county, and they do that largely by being services for everybody. So whatever your income, you know, you can use facilities and get out into the countryside. So many things are free or low cost, and I think that is vitally important. The process, I think, of pulling all together the contributions which Monlife makes in tackling inequality and poverty, I think, has been a useful exercise. I commend it to the other services which will be following on in that. It has actually helped, I think, to identify not only the contribution that Monlife makes, but also points of development as we go into what we know is going to be a very difficult winter for so many people and so many families in our county.
Thank you, councillor Birch. Councillor Thomas.
Thanks, dear honourable honourable members. Thanks, Chair. I visited food and fun and echo everything that's been said here in terms of the enjoyment of the youngsters, dedication of the staff, and particularly staff that they've brought in. I think very good experience for people who want to go into things like teaching and youth work, et cetera. But the point I want to make is from, if you like, a sort of a health and social care sort of point of view, Wales has got some of the highest sort of sickness rates and ill health in terms of things like obesity, lack of exercise, poor diet. And I think as we go forward in this, early in this term now, I do think we need to think about more initiatives to actually improve community health, whether, obviously, through Monlife and obviously starting with youngsters. And obviously, an unhealthy diet normally leads to unhealthy adults and then older people. And certainly the pressures that are coming through at the moment in all area health authorities, not entirely, but part of that is down to unhealthy lifestyles. So I think anything that we can do to improve that, I think we need to look at it more intensively. Thanks, dear honourable.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to endorse what's already been said and what councillor Thomas has just said. I was lucky enough to visit a couple of these programmes and I was just in awe of all that the staff did. And I think Ian Saunders and Nick John and all their team work so hard to help the children to really, on young people, to really enjoy themselves whilst learning. And it's such a social event with so many positive effects, so I just want to add my thanks.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Any other contributions? No? Councillor Fuchs, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, please, just to say thank you all for those contributions, councillors. Yeah, I know one of the young staff who worked for Monlife, and just to pass on some feedback from her, was that she found the training as well that she received to give, to take part in the Mammashia Games and so on, absolutely brilliant. And she really, really enjoyed her experience. So yeah, I'm glad that Monlife are getting the accolades they are. I think healthy eating is so important, councillor Grokot, and thank you for raising that. We must remember that poverty is not just about income, poverty is about health inequality, it's about having access to culture, having access to, free access to swimming pools. And I know we do, for example, a once-per-week swim for the over 60s that is free. So yes, I think, very, very big thanks to Nick John for putting the paper together and for us looking at Monlife through this poverty and inequality lens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fuchs. So now we shall move to item 6.4, Mammashia County Council's Self-Assessment Report. Councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you, Chair. This is the first time that a self-assessment report has been presented to the council, and that's because it's part of the Local Government and Election Wales Act 2021, which means that we now have a statutory duty to self-assess. means that we now have a statutory duty to self-evaluate annually. And it's slightly odd, I think, that because we're evaluating the previous year, I'm in the curious position of being a new leader of a different group, presenting a report of a council that I wasn't even part of. So bear with me and also recognise that what I will be giving is some of the top-level messages that came out of this report that we can take forward. Because I applaud the Welsh Government's initiative to enshrine a commitment to transparency and accountability in the law. And that's because, it may seem odd, but far from being a performative act in council, this is part of our core business to reflect on and to evaluate and to come together and think about what we did well, what we could do differently going forward, and what we would like to see, that we can absolutely be confident that we're doing the best that we can under these circumstances to meet the needs and to be really connected to the residents that we represent. So I think it is important that we do the self-evaluation, and I think it's important we get an opportunity to discuss it as a council. I may say that it's not a statutory duty to present it to council, actually. We only need to go through a scrutiny committee. But in fact, it's important we go to council because it's part of our values as a whole council, and has been for some time prior to our council, that we are accountable, that we are transparent, and that we do come together to debate with respect around what we're doing and how we're progressing on our set goals. So I don't really need to tell anyone just how difficult the last five years, well, since the tail end of 2019 into 2020 have been. And that clearly had an impact on the last year, which, while it may have been drawing to a close to the immediate response to the pandemic, which still continues, it was also difficult in terms of getting council business done because an election got in the way. And that takes up the time of offices as well as councillors trying to win back their Some points early on in 2020, previous councillors, we remember the plan on a page, which took over from the full five-year corporate plan for very obvious and clear reasons, that the council had to pivot towards responding to the Covid emergency, but also had to keep its eyes on what were the key priorities of the whole council. The council still had to function, still had to perform frontline duties, as well as support the residents through Covid. So what was assessed last year was that pivot, but also the way in which the council handled resources and made its partnerships and maintained its partnerships. But it did so around the, how many goals? Six, did it, five goals, which are there in the report, but I will read that because it will remind those who do want to respond in the debate. A best possible start in life, a thriving and well-connected community, maximising the potential of the natural and built environment, lifelong wellbeing, future focus, and a future-focused council. So what happened during self-assessment was because of the new council, the elections, the cabinet wasn't involved, it is normally involved, in doing any kind of assessment on council progress. That's not going to happen in future. That was because of circumstances, not because of any moves by the previous council or the previous cabinet. I make that clear here. What did happen was evaluation of the data and evaluation of the reports and analysis, but also taking workshops to directorates, and then it went to scrutiny. So in that evaluation, firstly, I would like to congratulate the previous council and the officers for the fact that the evaluation scored excellent around its response to Covid. And I think that's something that has been shared quite widely across the county about the response of Malmesher. And this is a moment to reflect on how it could have been different, and how important it was that we had a council that was ready and able to respond to the crisis, but also work so effectively in partnership with the Welsh Government. In other areas of those strategic goals, the council scored either good or adequate. You'll be reading in the report where it was working well and where it wasn't working quite so well. So when it came to actions to take forward, these really are ones that, because this report went to scrutiny in July, and scrutiny found nothing untoward really, and on the whole agreed with the outline of the report, I believe one councillor suggested it was slightly rose-tinted from the other group. But nevertheless, the actions that were suggested for going forward have informed the working group discussions of the new corporate and community plan, which is as it should be. We should always be forward-looking from these evaluations. They are there to help us gather the evidence and set a benchmark from which we can start assessing progress going forward. What I'd like to pick out is where the report identified areas of development. A key one, which I think across the council we'll all agree with, is strengthening and deepening collaborative work on health and social care, and addressing those very real and rising challenges facing our care sector. And that's one of the things that we have been looking at as a new council, and one of the things that we are absolutely committed to in terms of delivering social care, which is both empowering and enabling, but also addressing the real shortfalls and deficits in the staff that are available to care for vulnerable citizens within Malmesher. The second one is addressing homelessness, which, as you know, is a priority for this new council, and was clearly recognised that it was on the increase in the previous year. The third is pushing further on meeting our net zero ambitions, which we have made a start on that. And I think what the debate we've had today on two items shows how very complex this is, and how we have to be consistent and persistent in pursuing these net zero ambitions. The fourth one is addressing the midterm financial plans of the council. And I think you'll be all aware, because it's not news, of the constraints that local authorities are facing. After 10 years of austerity, and now a new UK government who is, well, the previous and the new one, who've been slow in making a settlement with the Welsh Government, and are indicating that there will not be large sums of money to deal with the winter crisis coming to local authorities. So nevertheless, it will be a focus of the, of ourselves as a council when we're meeting and rising to the challenge of a very difficult fiscal environment over the next two to three years, I would argue, looking at the external economic situation. Lastly, the point, the report highlighted how we can start to engage with communities and widen our partnerships. That is a key part of the, I was going to say, values. It clearly is steeped in our values. It clearly was steeped in the values of the previous council. What we want to do in this council is take forward the strong foundations, but ensure that we become more people-facing, that we find and develop together different, more inclusive ways of engaging. So none of our citizens, none of our residents are left behind. And in times as difficult as this, we find a way to absolutely protect the vulnerable and promote ways in which we can work together. I would like, just at the end of this, to thank the team led by Matt Gatehouse, who've put in extensive work putting through this self-assessment. I'd also like to thank the scrutiny committees for the work they spent on the self-assessment. And I would remind us all that what we're voting on here is not so much the content of the report, but the fact that we agree with the process and the fact that we have a report to take forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brocklesby. Councillor Neil.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. I note that there's an awful lot of really useful information in the report. One particularly striking feature was the, and these are the latest readings, that the staff turnover has increased by 44%, and it's now approaching, rapidly approaching 15% as an overall staff turnover level, which is a worrying development, but it's also a worrying level. I wonder if the administration has any comments on that, and if you can help us understand why that might be.
Thank you, councillor Neil. Councillor Brocklesby, would you like to respond?
I think there'll be a number of factors for this that I wouldn't actually like to drill down at the moment as to what they might be, but I will definitely get back to you with a written answer to that question.
Thank you, councillor Brocklesby. Councillor Grokot.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. The leader has commented that it seems slightly strange that she should be proposing a report on the performance of the last administration, of which she wasn't a member. So perhaps I could make a brief comment, as this is my second term on this council, although, of course, in the last term, there were eight of us on this side of the House, and there are now 22, and we form the administration, maybe within a few weeks with an absolute majority. I would say that we are prepared to give our support to this report, because at the end of the day, I will acknowledge that the Conservative group running this council did the best possible job that they could. They were, of course, encompassed by a Prime Minister in Westminster, who was at times an absolute hindrance to them in carrying out their political work here, although suddenly he appears to be quite a sensible Prime Minister, who was on the moderate side of the party. And I would also say that those of us who are still on this council, the four survivors on our side of the House from the last administration, are able to give our support to this report because, of course, we were here to observe. And were I still a teacher filling in that report, I think my conclusion would have been, could do better. But of course, with the effective scrutiny of the Labour opposition, the Conservative group actually did the best that they possibly could under the circumstances. And we did our best to ensure that the people of Malmesher, before we were able to take over the administration, got the best possible services. So it is two and a half cheers out of three for the last administration. And with the support of the Labour opposition, I think we're now in a position where we can support now that we run this administration.
Thank you, councillor Grokot. Councillor Bond.
I'm not sure I can follow that, actually. So I was just going to mention that I was on scrutiny, and also we'd had an education workshop where we discussed more strategy of looking at the holistic viewpoint and joined up approach of looking at a person from birth then to when they then become parents. So it was something I noticed when we were on the strategy, that there wasn't any measures prior to school. So as we all know, the attachment happens in the first couple of years, and it's really important. So it's the antenatal, postnatal, and then all the way through until those young people become parents themselves. So we need to be looking, listening to academic expertise that was on the education workshop as well. We need to be looking at the person holistically and ensuring that we're helping, perhaps with Sure Start, with health visiting, you know, I mean, that's a bigger issue, of course, but anything we can do to help people be the best parents they can be, to bring the young people to be the best people they can be. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bond. Councillor Brown.
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think looking through this report, one of the interesting statistics, which is on page 1767 or page 51 of this report, is the, it mentions the percentage of people living in households in material deprivation. And it says that in Wales, this was 11% in 2021-22. Malmesher previous was 10% 2019 to 2020. And the Malmesher current 2021-22 was 7%. So I do, I do remember that there was a considerable amount of work done, not only by officers, but also we had a specific cabinet member who dealt with social justice and inequality, and was working very hard in this particular area. And so I'm very pleased to see those changes in results. And as a result, I hope that councillor Grokot will give our administration some extra cheers for that particular result, because obviously, that is very important with regard to ensuring that people aren't in material deprivation. And I know that councillor Sarah Jones, who's no longer a councillor, but, you know, she worked very hard, and we were involved in a lot of workshops, and obviously, the officers progressed this agenda as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. As the leader rightfully said, so much happened over the, particularly the last two years of the administration's term in office. And I think it's certainly right that we take a moment to reflect on what the council faced during the pandemic period. Certainly, you know, it was a once-in-a-100-year event, like nothing has that any of us have experienced before, and something on a scale I don't think any of us would want to see again. You know, I know that everyone in the council, and I mean everyone, had to rise to the challenges and pressures that they never imagined would occur. I think we reacted and responded to the public health emergency well, as the leader alluded to in her contribution. And we never lost sight of the corporate plan. I know it was pared back, and, you know, we had to deliver in a slightly different way, but we certainly never lost sight of the corporate, the long-term corporate plan. As the former cabinet member for education, I just want to pay tribute and give my thanks to officers, to school leaders, to all those teaching and non-teaching staff working in our schools. They certainly all played their part in the regional and national effort to ameliorate the impact of Covid on the lives of our children, and obviously, on their immediate families as well. And of course, all those who we provide care and support for. I know huge efforts were made to develop approaches to maintain education continuity throughout that period. The blended learning offer continued to evolve during the pandemic, and in my view, was outstanding, not just within the region but across Wales. There is still, of course, a lot There is still, of course, a lot more work to be done, as the leader rightfully said, and it will be for the, obviously, the new administration to take that forward. I know councillor Grokot will be definitely refocusing on education standards, and ensuring that all our children and young people are back on a formal education pathway. You know, that came out loud and clear at a recent education event that he chaired earlier on this month. I have to say, to conclude Chair, I am really worried about areas of lifelong and wellbeing, and the immense stress on both social care for children and adults, both locally, regionally and nationally. You know, there's a huge amount of stress on the social care system, but also about the challenges to resettle our homeless population, as well as having the capacity to respond to events like the Ukrainian war, and obviously having to support asylum seekers and any unaccompanied children, which obviously will place additional pressures on our workforce. You know, we all know it's the right thing to do, but we know the constraints that we have, you know, within our, the resources and the people we have working for us within the council. You know, the challenges post-pandemic are certainly more acute and complex than they were before the pandemic, and I certainly wish the new administration well in addressing these issues. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Pavia. councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair. I was slightly perplexed by two things. Firstly, the leader suggested we weren't approving the report, we were approving the framework, but the report is indeed for approval, so just like clarification of that. The second thing is, I was interested to note that, for example, when it talks about seizing opportunities, it talks about seizing opportunities for when the tolls came off the Seven Bridge, which from my recollection was in December 2018. So I wonder if we have not seized them by now, then perhaps we ought to be rather quick about it. And the third thing, I was slightly worried about where councillor Grokot's contribution was going when he started to, I won't go there. I, you know, I have to say, it is very tiring in this chamber, hearing about, you know, different, I mean, actually, we just need to get on with our business, we don't need a constant reflection on Westminster or Welsh Government every five minutes, you know, we just need, obviously, they are relevant at times, and when they're relevant, that's entirely appropriate, but at times we just need to focus on our own business that the council is doing in this chamber and amongst its staff, and how it's delivering for our communities. Because the people who watch, and there aren't, you know, they don't do it in their droves, but those that do, do indeed make comment, they are always interested to note what the discussions are in this chamber. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Taylor. councillor Thomas.
Thanks dear. The one thing that I would want to say is, obviously, in the social services area, and particularly child services, you know, we are still picking up the tab, and this is not in any way a criticism of the previous administration, but we are picking up the tab of the huge pressure put on families during the Covid crisis, and in terms of level of abuse and troubles within families, and certainly the last administration, and certainly I will continue that, in terms of preventative care and support. Because at the end of the day, we as an authority do not want more children to go into care, into the fostering service, et cetera. It has thrown up a great pressure, it's put a huge pressure on staff. If you look at the statutory social services during the, the sort of demands, contacts for support, et cetera, it increased from 4,329 to 5,776, and that is showing an underlying pressure. Plus the fact that within social services, obviously adult social care as well, there is a huge pressure, and there is a huge demand for staff, which every authority is facing, and every authority in England and Wales is scrabbling for social workers, et cetera. And that is something that we are going to have to face. So I do commend particularly the staff in social services for coping that pressure and giving that support. And it's something that, again, I think as a, personally and as an administration, we want to move more and more to preventative measures, rather than picking up the difficulties at the end, which is more difficult and causes greater stress to youngsters, and stows up problems for future citizens in Monmouthshire. So, you know, it's something we really need to look at. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Thomas. councillor John.
Thank you. Well, thank you to everyone who has made meaningful and constructive contributions to the discussion. Given the contribution of councillor Grokot, I was very tempted to give you the full party political broadcast of what the glorious Conservative administration delivered last year, but I shall hold back slightly. But I would like to thank all the officers who supported the previous administration in our work. I'd really like to thank my team as well. As leader, I was really well supported by a brilliant cabinet team, a fantastic Conservative group, and I also pay tribute to the members who haven't returned after the election. I approve of the self-assessment report, I think it is important that we look back and learn the lessons, even though it's a new administration, I still think there are lessons that we can learn. It was a very challenging set of circumstances that we took on in May last year, you know, challenging for all the reasons that councillor Brocklesby set out. But despite that, there are some key achievements that I want to mention, and then a couple of lessons that I want to come on to. The progress we made in terms of new schools, the two new schools that we've opened in Caldercot and Monmouth, fantastic facilities and investments, and we obviously welcomed the support we had from across the chamber on those key commitments. And we look forward to the development of the new school in Abigavenny as well. We also made some significant investment in Chepstow School over the last year, and I know that's been welcomed by pupils and staff there. We made some significant changes to school catchment areas, and look forward to supporting the administration with the unfinished business in terms of the primary element of that. We're particularly proud of the progress that was made in our outdoor education service, concentrating our facilities on one site, and we look forward to the refurbishment of that site in Gilwyn. We're also really proud of our Duke of Edinburgh award scheme in Monmouthshire, it's the most successful in the whole of Wales, and that's something that we need to continue. Offering young people, particularly those from deprived backgrounds, the opportunity to explore the outdoors and learn leadership skills is really valuable, and that's why we were really proud of another commitment, which was the Compass for Life project that is being delivered in our schools. One of the most powerful things you can offer young people is hope and ambition for the future, and encouraging young people to really think about what they would like to achieve in their lives, and inspiring them in that way is really powerful. So we made really good progress in terms of offering children and young people the very best possible start in life. There are a number of other areas, I won't go through, you know, every single achievement, but there are a number that stand out, the significant investment in our leisure centres. We became one of the highest ranking recycling counties in Wales. We made significant progress with our investment in electric vehicles, there are now more electric vehicle charging points in Monmouthshire than almost any other local authority in Wales. Well, sorry, we delivered more than any other authority in Wales last year, and the continued work exploring hydrogen and the role that can play in the decarbonisation of our economy. I'm really proud of the awards we've received for work that was delivered last year. While it's the new administration that's been involved in the collection of those awards, I appreciate it was policies that were implemented by the previous administration. So, and of those, the one we're most proud of is the Welsh Veterans Award, employer of the year that we won in June, I think it was, for the support that this council has provided to ex-arm forces personnel and their families. It's always been a key priority for us to offer every support we can. And the new veterans hub that runs on a Monday morning in Abigavenny seems to be really, really successful, and an opportunity for veterans to come together. In connectivity, we're pleased with the progress that's been made on delivering 20 mile an hour zones, we've rolled out more of those in Monmouthshire last year than anywhere And one, another commitment I wanted to mention, I think we're going to be talking about a little bit later, stopping our pension funds from investing in fossil fuels, that was a key commitment that we were particularly proud of. I do think there are some lessons for the new administration, we did everything we could to try to keep council tax down, to recognise the challenges on hard-pressed families. We often did, we often protected services through innovation. Often it's very easy to look at the bottom line, and look at, say, a leisure centre and say, oh, well, this is losing money, sorry, times are tough, something's got to give. Well, it's far better to invest and innovate and find different ways of delivering services, because once something's gone, you're never going to get it back. So we've got to think outside the box, and, you know, I said a little bit earlier about Bob Greenland, he was brilliant at thinking outside the box, and if times are going to be tough the next few years, then that's going to be a real challenge that we need to rise to, and a lesson that we all need to learn from previous years. I hope the new administration will have seen what's been achieved through our investment portfolio. We have been criticised a number of times for some of the investments we've made, but those were investments made through borrowing, that's not money just sat there that can be invested in something else at zero cost. These were investments made to increase the amount of money we have to invest in frontline services. And you can also use your investment portfolio as a tool. So we have an agreement with Broadway, which brings in a revenue stream, they're a broadband provider, it brings in a revenue stream for the council, but it also has helped, it's set up a pipeline of millions of pounds worth of investment in fibre broadband to some rural not spots in Monmouthshire. So that's a way you can use your investment portfolio as a tool. So I hope that's something that the new administration will consider. I wish the new administration well with having an absolute majority in a few weeks' time. So we look forward to welcoming a new Labour member, you seem very convinced of that. I'd like to thank everyone across the chamber who supported the work that was undertaken over the last year. But I have to say, the description councillor Grokot gave of the Labour group was a little bit surprising. Obviously, you said there were eight of you, actually there were 10 of you at the start, but through infighting, you gradually went down, and by the end, I think you were six, because you deselected a couple. There was quite a lot of infighting, you were an all-male group.
councillor John, this may be opportune, you're running, you're past your time now, so if you can wrap it up.
I'll wrap up.
As much as everybody was enjoying that particular element of your contribution, I'm afraid you've run yourself out.
But, well, we always knew when their group meeting was going on, because we hear you bellowing at each other, so you weren't a particularly effective opposition. But, look, there are significant challenges that are coming down the tracks over the next few years, and I think there's a lot in this report that we can learn, where all parties can take a constructive approach, and lessons we can learn that can ensure that we deliver the best possible services we can for our residents and keep those services going. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John. Any final contributions before we return to councillor Brocklesby? councillor Jones.
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to say something at the end. In all seriousness, none of this could have been done without the hard work and commitment and anxiety that the staff, the officers, from the chief executive down, did during that time of the emergency crisis, the pandemic, et cetera. Without their help and without their guidance, we wouldn't have done any of this. So, you know, we may be patting ourselves on the back, and so we should, because we, you know, especially, I was working with the social services and health team who worked flat out, so I appreciate everything that was being done. But really, can we please recognise at the same time that none of us would be here without their contribution, and we ought to thank them all.
Thank you councillor Jones. That seems to be it, so back to you councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to echo what councillor Jones said, that the assessment is on the functioning and running, and the successful running of the council, a lot of which is due to the councillors and their dedication across the board, from senior leadership down to the cleaners here. Just to confirm, we are voting on the self-assessment. Much as we'd like to forget the wider world, councillor Taylor, much of our resources come from the Welsh Government and the UK Government. I'm hearing echo, okay. And thank you very much for outlining both behaviour traits of the last councillors, councillor John liked to see it, as well as your recognition of some of your achievements. I'm glad he also recognised that there's always room for improvement, whoever is in charge. One point to councillor Brown, and this is a serious point, about understanding poverty and inequality. I would love to, at the end of five years, to here in front of you and claim that we as a council had closed the inequality gap, the worst in Wales, in Monmouthshire, and also that we had reduced poverty, and that we were entirely responsible for both. Sadly, I can't do that, because no one intervention can ever be entirely responsible for reducing poverty or for closing inequality. There is no direct causal relationship. So despite, and I'm not here to dispute what you're saying councillor Brown, but despite the hard work of the previous council, the 7% rate of poverty in Monmouthshire is indicative of our inequality gap as much as falling poverty levels, which didn't happen. It's because we have far more people who are well off, or very well off, than most other local authorities, that we have a lower rate. And we have a different type of poverty as well, one that we will have to address and one that is growing because of the current council, because of the current crisis that we face, but it's one that's in pockets, that is pepper potted across our communities, that is, in parts of the south is where there is much more poverty than the north, but it is across. It is not the same kind of concentration that you see in our near neighbours such as Torvine and Blenar Gwent. Our challenges that we face around education, our challenges we face around social care, our challenges that we face around homelessness, it's different because we are a different council. And I think one of the things that this report is so good about is it recognises the context. And I quite agree with councillors who pointed out the wealth of data that had been collected throughout the last council, and I do think we have some of the best data on poverty and wellbeing and the economy across local authorities in Wales. So I would end by saying I would like to recommend that we accept this report.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. councillor Brown, do you wish to raise a point of order?
It's just a point, obviously, a comment's been made about me.
No, 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 I'm sorry, unless a personal explanation, we will, yes, we will hear that.
In person. I mean, I do recognise that poverty is a complex issue, and obviously there's a lot of factors that contribute to it, and I was pleased to note that obviously the number of households, the percentage has lowered. And there were efforts of the council involved, but I appreciate that it is a complex matter. So, you know, thank you for informing me of that, but I do realise that that's the case, but I do also realise that officers here worked hard on
But I do also realise that officers here worked hard on that particular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Right, we are now going to move to a vote. Thank you, councillors, that's approved. Now, I know we're a little bit early, we're going to have a very short break. My apologies for overrunning our break last time, but we really will be back in 10 minutes now. Thank you. Okay, councillors, we're going to move to item seven, motions to council. Councillor Chandler.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, councillors. Councillors, you don't need me to tell you that we're experiencing a climate crisis. We've seen it, I mean, we've seen it locally with the recent heatwaves of unprecedented heat and drought. We've seen it with the recent floods, again, which have been completely unprecedented. But also, we're seeing it globally, not just here in Monmouthshire. And we've seen the evidence that has come forward from scientists and experts and UN panels from around the world. Concentration of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere at the moment is in excess of 415 parts per million, compared with a norm of about 280. These are levels of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere that have not been seen for 3 million years, long before humans existed and when sea levels were 100 feet higher than they are now. Imagine what that would be like for a lot of our county. Now, emissions have already reached, I'm sorry, global warming is already reaching about one degree above normal levels. And in terms of the targets, the trends of what we've seen internationally, carbon emissions are on track to well exceed 1.5 degrees centigrade, which is what the UN and the International Climate Agreements saw as probably the safe limit before we see really destructive climate patterns. So we're in danger. We're in a danger, in potentially even an existential crisis for humanity. Now, given alongside that, there's also been much progress that's been made. Public support for more stronger and swifter action on climate change, as at the highest it's ever been. And the majority of people want us to see us do more. There's been a lot of international agreements, there's been a lot of actions by individuals, by nations, by international organisations. But, as I said, those trends are in, are not on the right trajectory. In many ways, there's too little being done and a lot of it is being too late. And while we've had some of that progress that has been made both nationally and internationally, and there's a lot of good things happened, we're also, though, seeing a little bit of a reverse at the moment with our new Conservative government in the UK, is actually trying to reverse actions that we've taken in terms of opening up fracking and other fossil fuel extraction and getting rid of measures. So at the same time as maintaining a ban on onshore wind farms, it's actually opening up the opportunity for fracking and all the dangers and all the climate impacts that would have. So, given that context, one might think, well, what is the point? What is the point in trying to do anything? Or we have the other choice of saying, actually, we need to redouble our efforts. And certainly, I think, and I hope all of us here think, that we should be redoubling our efforts to try and combat the effects of climate change and the causes of climate change. So, given that, obviously, in 2019, we as a council declared a climate emergency. And in that, we made a commitment to review all of our plans and policies in order to align them with those goals of our climate emergency declaration, to limit our emissions to net zero by 2030. And we've done a lot of progress in that. So, and again, I might want to make more progress and make that progress quicker. But we have been looking quite extensively at how the council can reduce its own direct carbon emissions, its own climate footprint. And it's also been exploring how it can look at the carbon footprint of its procurement policy, which is the biggest element of the carbon footprint of the council. But what it's not done is it's not done the same thing for its investment portfolio. And of course, when we're looking at who are the actors that hold the most leverage in combating climate change, yes, as individuals, we can go so far, yes, as other actors, we can go so far. But actually, it's the financial institutions that actually hold the majority of the levers that are going to be able to make the changes that need to happen. So that is why I would putting forward this proposal. Coming out of discussions at the governance and audit committee that I'm a member of, and looking at the Treasury management plans that the council has. We do have investments, we're mandated by law to keep a minimum of £10 million in cash investments. We usually have significantly more than that. We're also custodians for other trust funds, and we're also a member of the Greater Grant Pension Fund. We have a fair amount of financial leverage here, and that's why I'm proposing not a, I'm not setting out what that sustainable investment policy should be here now. I'm setting out a proposal that says, asking the council and the Treasury management team to actually investigate how responsible the council invests its cash balances and to come back to us with a proposal on how that, we could have a sustainable investment policy that is compatible with our declaration of a climate emergency and also compatible with the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act, Future Generations Act, which is an obligation that the council is under and is perhaps not yet fulfilled. And as a member of the Greater Grant Pension Fund, which is managed by Talvain, County Borough Council, also want us to use our influence in that to either get them to introduce a similar policy, or if they already have one, to ensure that that policy is as robust as it could be. That is my motion, councillor, I hope you will support it. It's one step amongst many that we need to make to try and combat this climate crisis in order to provide us with a resilient and a sustainable future for us and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler, do I have a second for this motion? Councillor Taylor.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to second the motion, thank you.
Councillor Taylor, do you want to speak to that, or?
No, thank you Chair, I was raising my hand to second the motion, just in line with now our protocol.
No problem, thank you. In which case, if nobody wants to speak to this, we can move straight to a vote. And so that's what we shall do. Well councillors, that motion is carried with astonishing efficiency. Right, we'll move to item 7.2 please, councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair, I'll try that again. So, I've put this motion forward, and it is in response to a number of conversations that I've had with local businesses, in particular where I live in Meir. So, as you will be aware, the Welsh Government were going to revise their non-domestic rate policy, just prior to the pandemic, and they decided to hold fire on that, and obviously then the pandemic came and there were a number of measures in order to support businesses during that period. In March of this year, probably the day the demand dropped on their doorsteps, I got a huge amount of messages asking, well, what on earth is this? Because this is in particular in respect of businesses that are, would have been in receipt of small business rate relief previously. One understands that businesses who may be medium size or large will have benefited from the 50% rebate that Welsh Government put in place for them. However, small businesses, those who would not have paid any of their non-domestic rating bill, were faced in March with a bill, many of them for the very first time. So whilst in February, they had been issued with a grant in respect of the difficulties in trading conditions that the Omicron variant had proposed, in March, they were then faced with a, with a bill for which they were neither prepared, nor indeed probably able to meet the cost of, for some, for some it may have made the difference between survival and being able to continue. The concern is, is that they had to pay 50% in March of this year, however, come March of next year, they will receive a demand for 100% of their ratable value. Now, that coupled with the perfect storm of hugely rising energy costs, and I would argue for many who are still recovering from the Covid crisis, and where we see consumers with lower levels of confidence because they've got less money in their pockets, and are concerned about what the winter will bring, that this is just not the time to be asking small businesses to make those payments. So my ask is, as set out in the motion really, that we ask Welsh Government to review this policy, and that we ask them to reconsider in the light of the conditions that small businesses face currently. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Taylor, do I have a second? Councillor Bromfield, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak as well, if that's okay.
Go ahead, of course.
So, I was going to say the Welsh Government last week committed to a review of business rates, and is currently consulting with partners. So whilst I welcome councillor Taylor's vitally important motion, this is actually already happening. It is highly unlikely that a review will see any tangible outcomes for businesses before next April, which is when rates are payable and the new multiplier comes into effect. As such, a minister should rule out any rises in business rates in her forthcoming budget. As we are all aware, businesses are just recovering from the pandemic and are now being hit with huge utility bills. This will be detrimental not just to our county, but the whole of Wales. I believe MCC should lead in the response to this. Without change, this will continue to get worse. Business rates are already at a 23-year high. If we don't act now to safeguard the businesses and our communities, there won't be any left to contribute to our economy, which will ultimately put pressure on the council as unemployment rates will inevitably go up. I'm not suggesting an amendment, but would the cabinet member write to the minister to encourage a freeze on business rates for eligible businesses in her forthcoming budget?
Thank you councillor Bromfield. Councillor Garrick.
Hello, I'd like to suggest amendment to this one. Essentially, just for clarity and accuracy, the motion itself is talking about non-domestic rates for small businesses. The actual scheme that was giving discount was actually the Retail Leisure and Hospitality Rate Relief Scheme, so I've just suggested an amendment just to correct that, so the motion itself is accurate. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrick. Councillors, the amendment suggested has appeared in your chat, just, I'm going to give everybody a couple of minutes to make sure they've got time to read it. Right, I'm hoping that's enough time for everybody. Do I have a second for this amendment? Councillor Brocklesby. Councillor Taylor, are you willing to accept this amendment?
I was just going to say, I'm more than happy, I mean, I didn't put that in, really, just to be clear for members, because I didn't want them to think it was the whole of that scheme that I was particularly referring to, but I'm more than happy to, to accept that, and I think that councillor Bromfield's point is a really one, is one really well made, and if the cabinet member were willing to include slightly stronger terms in her letter, I would be very supportive of that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Garrick, how does that sound to you?
I can consider it. I'm sorry, I've lost sound, I think.
Okay, fine, okay, that's fine. Okay, we're going to take Alastair, councillor Alastair Neil.
Yes, thank you, and just to support councillor Bromfield, but also add one suggestion, that we, in addition to writing to the Welsh Government, that we write to all 21 other local authorities, with a template of the letter that we send, because that would actually press a debate to be held on the matter in the Welsh Government, and potentially would be a more constructive point than just a, you know, written response. So, that doesn't need to be an amendment, it's simply an additional suggestion from the, from the motion in front of us, which I support.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Councillor Dimmock, we can't hear you, you're on mute.
You'd have thought I'd have learnt by now, wouldn't you, after nearly three years? But, there we go. So we're, I support councillor Taylor's motion, and councillor Bromfield, and councillor Neil's recommendations. We are a county full of small businesses here in Monmouthshire, and rates are the number one barrier to local businesses and growth. They do not reflect economic cycle or environment, revaluations are made on a five-yearly basis here in Wales, which is so out of sync with the economic circumstances in England and Scotland, they do it every three years, which is a much better model, I feel. Some of our town centres, like Caldecott, with empty shop fronts already and appetising, these businesses have not had it easy the last couple of years, but they are going to require further support urgently to get them through the storm like councillor Taylor described. So, thank you councillor Taylor for bringing this forward.
Thank you councillor Dimmock.
Can I just ask for confirmation? Did the cabinet member say, said that she would consider writing to the minister, or did she agree? Sorry, I don't know if I.
No, my apologies councillor Dimmock, I didn't make that very clear. My understanding is that councillor Garrick will consider it. Is that correct councillor Garrick? Consider councillor Bromfield's suggestions, additions, yeah.
Sorry, is, my, this isn't a formal question to me, I'm really confused while I'm being asked to answer questions. This is a motion.
No, my apologies.
Did you not respond, sorry, just for confirmation?
Yes, sorry, I clearly, I've led us into a muddle here, this is, you know, mea culpa. What I'm asking councillor Garrick is whether you will consider adding councillor Bromfield's suggestions into the letter, into the letter.
Yes.
Thank you. Right, councillor Powell.
Thank you very much Chair, and having been in business many years ago, we have, we struggled at the same time, we always were keen to pay council tax when things were a bit hard going, but at the moment, these businesses have almost come to a standstill, and they really do need help to get going again. If we lose, we don't only lose them as a business, but it adds to the unemployed then, because otherwise, they're either going to have to try and get a job somewhere, or wait until they can start up again. I think they really think they need help. We don't want to see the towns full, full of empty shops because the people couldn't pay their rates, so I feel it's very important that they are given help to get their businesses back on, on track, and I support this motion wholeheartedly.
Thank you councillor Powell. Councillor Pavia.
Thanks Chair, it's obviously clear that councillor Taylor's preempted the Welsh Government's NDR review consultation with this motion, and she obviously is well connected and knew it was coming. But the evidence is, is clear, you know, sky-high business rates cost shops and jobs, so it is encouraging to see recognition by the Welsh Government of the need for business rate reform, which I welcome. I know business rates and rental costs has certainly hit businesses in Chappstow, and continue to make trade, in particular retail trade, very challenging, and will certainly be challenging without any additional change in, in policy. Therefore, this is, this is the perfect opportunity to begin a process to, you know, the reverse the damages that has been done by business rates, and ensure a tax system that supports the retail industry and investment and growth longer term into the future. However, as councillor Bromfield alluded to, action is needed now. I believe if we call on the finance minister to heed the calls made by the British Retail Consortium and others to rule out any increase in the business rate multiplier next spring, and set out a timetable for returning the multiplier rate permanently to a lower and more sustainable level, that will have a positive impact for business, not just here in Monmouthshire, but across Wales, because any increases in next year's multiplier will of course have a CPI-linked effect, and will have a devastating, in fact, effect on Welsh shops at a time when they are obviously grappling with spiral, spiralling costs, flattening sales, and, and challenges to shopper footfall as well, as we all look to tighten our belts. So I hope the cabinet member will consider councillor Bromfield's call as part of that letter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pavia. I'm going to come to councillor Riley, and then to you councillor Keir. Councillor Riley.
Thank you, sorry, I'm having a few technical difficulties in my, my circumstances. I just wanted to say that despite what councillor Taylor has said, when considering this motion, we, we got to look at the, we can't look at it in isolation, we have to look at the current Westminster government economic policy. It's been a, I believe they're inseparable when you're asking for money from Welsh Government. It's been a long time since my economic degree, but in simple terms, I think the current higher rate tax level abolition of 5% from 45%, for the highest 1% of earners, for those earning over 155k is justified as being trickle-down economics, i.e. those lucky people will spend it, those lucky people will spend an increased income for the less, for the less lucky. This is in conjunction with those old favourites of laissez-faire, non-interventionist economics, i.e. let the market.
Councillor Riley, we're struggling a little with the relevance of this.
Oh, well, can I carry on then?
If you could maybe move to more relevant territory or wrap it up.
Okay, well, if people don't buy, businesses are considered inviable and will fail, but can they buy? The people who earn, the highest 1% of earners, say, maybe earning 1 million per year, will save 50k, will they spend it in Monmouthshire? So, we'll trickle, trickle-down economics, what I'm, what I'm effectively, what perhaps ineffectively saying is, we are asking Welsh Government again to counteract the, the policies of Westminster. If those 50k, if those people who are saving 50k, let's consider they may be Tory donors, and there is evidence to support that. Chair, 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 can I just say, I'm not sure how this is relevant.
This has gone off on a, this has gone off on a complete tangent, so I'm gonna wrap you up there and move on to councillor Keir, please. Councillor Keir.
Thank you very much Chair. I was going to start my point by saying I'm a massive fan of shopping locally, and keeping the issues locally, because one of the biggest talking points during the election, when I was talking to potential voters, was the business rates, and how it was being detrimental to the future success of a small high street such as Usk. And the point is continuing to be made, when I'm out and about talking to constituents, what are we going to do? What can be done? So I welcome the motion from Frances Taylor, and I welcome the contributions from councillor Bromfield and councillor Neil, and I think it's not a question of the cabinet minister saying we'll consider it, this council, I think, is going to say, we want it, please, a positive comment to go forward, please, please review what is going on for the future success of our high street. It will potentially lead to, if we don't do something, we're going to see businesses close and more unemployment, so I would strongly recommend that we approve this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Neil, did you wish to make a point of order?
Just a short one Chair, if I may, and respectfully, I think you overlooked the request I was making, the suggestion I was making, that the cabinet member also write to the other 21 authorities. I may have misheard you, but I didn't hear you round that one up in what we were asking the cabinet member to, to follow up with.
That's noted councillor Neil, and I'm sure the cabinet member will take that on board.
I, I support this motion, partly because until I changed jobs quite recently, I was a small business. And I do think it's important, we are not just a county, but we are a country of small businesses. 95% of businesses in Wales are small and micro businesses. I'm taken by the idea that councillor Taylor has a fast line to the Welsh Government, and with preempting the review. I'm also taken by the fact that councillor Bromfield seems to have a crystal ball, in that she appears to know the outcome of the, what the review will be. that she appears to know the outcome of what the review will be, and I don't think any of us know what the outcome of the review will be. It will have to be based on, I am sorry, I'm especially sorry, because everybody gets my name round the face, so I should know better, I apologize. The review taken by the Welsh Government should be taking into account opinions of, and will be taking in account, opinions of the business sector, and will be based on evidence, and until we see the outcome of review, I don't think any of us can be entirely certain that what recommendations will be and what the Welsh Government will take forward.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. Any other contributions before we return to councillor Taylor?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I don't have a crystal ball, but it was about being proactive, not reactive.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair, I think what is evident, and it would be helpful that we agree to do this rapidly perhaps, that there is concern on each and every high street, and that we can all see as members, we have many of us had representations from businesses, constituents, people in our own communities, so I would ask you to support this mention, and I would respectfully request that the cabinet member would perhaps do it, make, agree to write quickly, so that we can add our weight, because even if there is a review, if we can set out some of the things that we are seeing, then hopefully that should contribute to any review of this policy, and if there is a need, we can also offer to provide testimony from our small businesses locally perhaps, who are struggling with the non-domestic rates, the change in those payments, and who are still recovering, and who face this kind of winter of uncertainty and rising costs. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Taylor. So councillors, we're now gonna move to a vote on the motion as amended. Councillors, that motion is carried, and that concludes our business for today. So our next meeting will be on 27th of October.